One. I now call tonight's special study session on traffic alleviation to order. If we could be... I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, if we could just have a quick roll call and then I'll introduce those in attendance?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Stevie Lee and Artist.
Here.
Councilmember Marcia Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Spector.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rob Brenney.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Mariko Sayoc.
Here. And if everyone could please stand to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you, everyone, and again, welcome to tonight's meeting. Tonight's study session is a little different in that we have invited members, not only of the Montesereno Council, and I'll introduce them shortly, but we also have our state senator in attendance. The goal, as we discussed last time, is to look at what are the available measures to help us as a town, as a neighboring city, address the traffic that has been really affecting our quality of life. And as we discussed at the last meeting, there are areas, there are challenges that are outside of our own jurisdiction. And so the idea is how do we bring our partnerships and those communications together so that as a community, you're able to convey those hardships and they can hear that? But also, how can our partners work with us to see what measures we can address in the future? Again, we've always talked about how this is a regional challenge that requires a regional solution. And so I thank all of you for being here in the audience to help really convey that message to the state senator as well as to our neighboring council members. So, real quick, I will introduce our state senator, Jim Bell. Thank you again for joining us. In our audience, we have Mayor Marshall Anstig... Anstig, sorry. Our Vice Mayor Burton Craig. And Montesereno's council member, Rowena Turner. Okay? And if you would like to speak, we'd welcome that as well later. So what the format for today will be, I will turn to our staff for a report. There is a comprehensive written report as well. And then I... We will open it up for verbal testimony based not only on the new material, but again, experiences that you've had. If you have specific questions, we will take all of those and we will address them at the end of verbal testimony. And at that time, Senator, we'd welcome comments from you on what we can expect from the state side.
I won't respond.
Okay? Great. Thank you. Okay, thank you all. Mr. Morley.
Thank you very much. Matt Morley. I think we have some verbal communication that we want to take care of.
Yes, thank you for reminding me that before we get into the business of the day. We do have verbal communications. And this is the time for anyone who would like to address on issues that are not related to traffic. I have one speaker card. Angelia Dorner.
Hello. There we go. Hello, Angelia Dorner, proud, proud resident of the Almond Grove. I just wanted to apologize to the Senator and to our fellow community community members in Montesereno for the lack of attendance of all of the residents. Because unfortunately, I believe that we did follow the letter of the law regarding Brown Act as far as noticing of this meeting, but not the spirit of the law by providing ample opportunity for the community to participate in the discussions concerning the most important matter, not only affecting this town, but each and every person's quality of life, as well as their personal angst regarding safety for themselves and their friends. There was a late notice on Friday. The only reason why I even knew about it and put it on next door myself and sent a few emails out was because it had to be mentioned casually at the last council meeting. But the agenda was posted without any other kinds of notice. It was put on What's New if you got the email from What's New. But if you go to our town website, there's a big difference in what was in the email. All of the things in red, this meeting, the planning commission meeting, all of the great disaster stuff, which someone spent a lot of time putting together, was in the email, but none of that stuff made it to our website. So I'm not quite sure. Hopefully, we could correct that in the future. And I do appreciate all the effort that staff has done to do this and just wish that more people had known so that they could be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are now going to go into the details of the study session. Again, there is a written report that reflects the work from September 5, as well as bringing us up to date. So, Mr. Morley, if you can walk us through that?
Thank you very much. Matt Morley, Director of Parks and Public Works. So, we're excited to talk and have a conversation... As soon as I get this thing on. There we go. To talk not only about our summer cut-through traffic, but traffic as an issue in general in town. Wanted to start out with acknowledging that not everything that we talk about is going to be doable. There's certainly resource restrictions in terms of dollars and staff time and other elements that we'll discuss. And I'll talk... But I will try to demonstrate some of the things that we are working on already and the significant steps that the town and town council, with the town council's leadership have taken on to make some measurable strides. Of course, if there are ideas that I don't cover, we'd like to hear them. That's what this is all about. I know that there are some efforts we've been working on already, like green bike lanes and Highway 9 Trail Connector that didn't make the memo or the report. So there's lots of stuff going on out there. We're anxious to continue the discussion. So out of the... For outcomes tonight, we're looking at three main points that we'd like to hear about from the council. The first is what form does a closure at South Santa Cruz Avenue take next summer? So this is our annual closure that we've been doing during the summer. And we'd like to know what the council's preference is so that we can do our advanced planning on what that looks like next summer. And this grows out of the discussion that we had at the last meeting as well. Related to that, should staff continue towards a permanent roundabout at that location to facilitate not only a gateway entry into the town, but also future closures when they're needed? And we'll talk a little bit about a roundabout in our discussion. And then on top of that, in the... From the broader sense of traffic, what other long-term capital improvements should we prioritize? And we really want to take it to council's input on how things line out. And we'll be able to bring those back to you in a formulated strategy as we talk about the council's strategies for the upcoming year. So, as we've talked about, the traffic for Los Gatos is a regional issue. We've been working closely with Caltrans and VTA. We had a meeting earlier this month that got everybody together in one room. So we were able to start that conversation in depth and talk about responsibilities and roles and where we can move things forward, what projects are easier to move forward than others, and what we need to be paying attention to as a group to move things along. Again, moving everything all at once is going to be difficult. Some of these will have a Caltrans lead, some will have a VTA lead, some will have a town lead. So we wanted to make sure that everybody was engaged in the conversation. As we're looking at some of our big issues, Highway 17 has capacity issues. We talked a lot about that in the staff memo as an opening, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. We see that impact of that on our summer cut-through traffic days, especially where the traffic just becomes very impacted on our local streets as we know. But we also see it on Highway 85, as a result of Highway 85 in the morning, where we get cut-through traffic on Highway 9 and headed towards Montesereno. That is very impactful as well, and we've struggled with solutions for that. And so we'd like to make sure that our discussion is holistic in terms of improvements in how we handle things. So, much like Highway 17 has capacity issues, Highway 85 has those same capacity issues and the result is traffic coming down through town. I'd like to note that that's not always traffic coming down to Highway 17. A lot of it comes through town, for instance, on Blossom Hill Road from the Almeden Valley and cuts through on Santa Cruz Avenue. So the dynamics, as we've seen with traffic, the dynamics are fluid. And that makes our challenge even greater. This is a table that comes right off of a reporting mechanism on the Caltrans website. And it tells a little story, and this is just a sample from one day this summer. And it tells a little bit on a Saturday, so this is our beach traffic day. Tells a little story about what happens with traffic. So the red line, as you see on the chart, is the flow of vehicles per hour. And as you see, as that flow reaches the 3,800 vehicles per hour mark, the speeds really start to decrease. So the green arrow you can see shows the speeds coming way down. And the result of that, as we're reaching that capacity, is that the ability of the roadway to carry vehicles in terms of volume decreases as well. So you see the red chart come down as well. And that lasts through the course of the afternoon and then starts to recover in the late afternoon. That mimics our cut-through traffic pretty much exactly in terms of what we see on the streets. So we recover at the late afternoon after the freeways started to recover. So what we see early in the morning with this is that vehicles are looking for an alternative way as the freeways really start to back up and that becomes the source of the cut-through. So as we're looking at this, the big challenge for us is that capacity on Highway 17 or on Highway 85 similarly. As long as we're into data, I thought I'd aggregate a little bit of the data that we provided to you along the way through the reports and the addendum and desk items. So we summer... We wanted to make sure that you had lots of data, lots of raw data to be able to look at. And I know it becomes overwhelming, so we wanted to start to summarize a little bit of it. This is interesting information from my perspective in that it identifies our eastbound and westbound traffic on Highway 9 headed towards Highway 17. So what we've done is we've taken that, those two segments as being significantly important. I'm going to zoom forward just because sometimes, some people work better on a picture. And so this is the orange line is Highway 17. The eastbound traffic is on the left and the westbound traffic is on the right, sort of headed towards 17. From the Boulevard on the right, headed west. And from downtown on the other side, headed east. So I'll go back to the numbers because the numbers are hard to read here, but they're easier reflected on the charts. So the first table here is what happens on our weekend averages. So I wanted to show you that Saturdays and Sundays are a little bit different. The Sunday traffic is a little bit less, a little bit lighter than what we experience on a Saturdays. I think we all knew that. We see that on the weekends when we're making our way throughout town. Saturdays tend, on average, tend to be a little bit more difficult to move about. And the numbers certainly reflect this. We think that having these two stretches of road really reflect the impact of cut-through traffic to the town because everybody who's flowing through town is ultimately looking to get back on the freeway at these locations. I think we've had this discussion in the past when we talked about whether we should have closures on Saturday and Sunday or just one of the two days, and this may help to further the conversation on that. So this is the same two stretches of roads, so headed eastbound towards 17. From... So this is from the downtown and headed westbound from Los Gatos Boulevard, the same two stretches. Comparing the pre-closure data with the post-closure data. And if you remember this year, in May, the, I think, third weekend in May, we had a heavy traffic load in the downtown, almost very much like a summer beach traffic day, but it was right before the holiday weekend, so we did not have a closure in place. So this was a great comparison weekend for us in terms of numbers, and we felt it in town. I think the roadways really felt the impact of that weekend. So it's from a comparison basis, we liked this comparison. It shows that on a Saturday, on the pre-closure, that headed eastbound on Highway 9, so this is coming from the Montesereno direction, we had 3,100 cars, and then during a closure day, that decreased by about a third. So a significant decrease during the closure. The closure numbers are an average of all of the closure Saturdays, so that you're aware of what that looks like. On the westbound side, a little bit different story, more of a status quo story. So headed from the Boulevard towards Highway 17 on Highway 9, the traffic was a 3% increase. So pretty much a status quo, not a whole lot of change there with that number. And then you can see the similar numbers on Sunday. So a slight increase on the Sunday's eastbound, but a little larger increase on the westbound. Again, we don't necessarily see the impacts on Sundays, but I think the numbers can feed into the conversation and be informative. So again, this just shows where those numbers are. Sorry, the font's a little bit small, so I'll move on. I wanted to talk about all of the projects that we've been doing, we've been working on, and all of those that we wanted to have a discussion on, or a good number of those that we wanted to have a discussion on. And I have highlighted those that we have in progress or have some direction from council in red so that you could see all of the work that we've got started. So the roundabout at Wood Road is the important, one of the important ones for the conversation tonight. We'd like to hear the input from the council on both points, whether what we should be doing this coming summer in terms of a temporary roundabout and what we should be doing from a permanent roundabout, if we should continue moving forward with that work. And then I wanted to give you a peek at what that roundabout starts to look about. So this is a graphic of what that South Santa Cruz Avenue at Wood Road roundabout could look like, and this is very early in terms of design, and really looking at the geometry of the roadway to see how things fit. A couple of things that we've noted is that it does bring the speeds way down as folks are coming off the freeway. So a big advantage from that perspective. It does fit in terms of town-owned property and a slight use of Caltrans right away. So there'll be some permitting requirements with Caltrans if we decide to make this happen. And it facilitates, on the sort of the bottom left of that roundabout, facilitates an ongoing closure there when we need it. So we'll be able to do it if the council desires or directs on the summer cut-through and also on, for instance, nights and evenings when the commute traffic becomes really difficult, as we've had recently, where the police department has been asked to close that roadway. So it facilitates our ongoing management of that part of town. Ultimately, what that closure looks like will materialize out of the design. Again, this is a concept and very early. Moving on with the projects, as you're aware, we did get direction to move forward with a Highway 9 corridor study. This will study the corridor between Montesereno and Los Gatos Boulevard and provide us with information with a real focus on addressing our local traffic needs. So if you think about a typical traffic study, they're looking at efficiencies and how you move traffic through a corridor. Not necessarily what we're looking for here. We're looking to make sure that, or to adjust our dynamics so that we can move traffic around locally with the protection of our local streets and safety as our two top priorities. Safety being obviously paramount, and then the local streets being secondary. If there's an improvement to traffic flow, that would also be a nice to have in terms of our morning cut-through traffic and other traffic flow. The next project is a project that we've talked about a little bit, the Highway 9 and Highway 17 interchange. This is a Measure B project, so we've lined it up for potential future funding. And this would fully renovate the interchange at Highway 9 and Highway 17, make it a modern interchange. With that comes significant safety improvements. And of course, this will fold in a little bit into the corridor study as we're examining that. This is a... This project will take a little bit more effort to move forward because of the costs and the advanced planning necessary for it. So if there's an interest in it, the council should provide some feedback on the priority level and how soon we'd like to see that movement start to happen. In terms of ramp metering, we, in our conversation with VTA and Caltrans, identified this is a project where both of those organizations have good, high-level interest in moving this forward. VTA had actually tried to do ramp metering in town before and ran into some roadblocks. So if the town was interested in moving this forward, they would be supportive of that. I would note that ramp metering does have the potential to have, as much of the things in town do have ramifications on local traffic, on local streets. As the traffic queues at the ramps, it may impact the local streets. So there's some cautionary notes there. We've had some conversations about downtown one-way streets. This could include such changes as switching Santa Cruz to a one-way going northbound, so away from the Santa Cruz direction, and countering that with a southbound university to create the balance. This creates an opportunity for changes to parking and sidewalk pedestrian infrastructure in the downtown and opens up probably a larger conversation on what that looks like. It's not, in our opinion, as effective in terms of a traffic management plan. So because there's still a pathway, and we all have experienced that if there's a pathway, the traffic will find it, we would anticipate that if we were to do this, that cut-through traffic without a closure would still be a challenge for us. Highway 17 widening is one that we think we heard some inkling of interest from. Wanted to make note that it isn't our general plan, that this is not something the town is interested in pursuing. We also took it out of the Measure B program and Vision 2040. So moving this one forward would take a lot of catching up from the town's perspective and may make it a very challenging item to move forward. Obviously, as I mentioned in the staff's report, Caltrans would be looking at a full study, corridor study, from 280 all the way to the summit, something along that lines that would be a more significant project. So they could fully understand what the needs were on that corridor. And they'd want to take it on in terms of a logical implementation. They would... Caltrans or VTA would likely be the lead agency, so the town would provide a supporting role. And with that, we would not necessarily have the control that we might like in having something, such a large construction project go through the middle of town. Freeway CMS signs, changeable message signs, sorry for the acronym, are something that we discussed in the past. These... In the past, the infrastructure had not been in place to implement these. Now is, and Caltrans is willing to have a conversation with us about moving this forward. The language that we would put on these signs, if it's drive time language, so the amount of time from the sign to, say, the summit or to Santa Cruz, would need to be strategic and it would need to be data-driven. So they would pull, Caltrans would pull that number from calculations. It wouldn't be something that we could automatically populate. And of course, that begs the question of if traffic is super-heavy, what would the driver choose to do if they see a large number there? So a little bit of risk there, also a lot of reward if the drivers decide that it's worthwhile to stay on the freeway. So it's certainly worth some conversation. We talked about reclassifying local collectors at the last meeting. This would help to move forward one of my priorities, which is protecting our residential streets as much as we possibly can. We've... We're working on compiling that list now, and we'll be forwarding it to the mapping companies in the next month or so to get them working on putting those in place for us for the future. And speaking of mapping companies, we continue our work with the mapping companies. Again, Waze continues to be the one that is the most talked about, also the one that's most willing to work with us. We still have our neighborhood street no-left turns in place in Waze, sort of behind the scenes. So those are in place and still working should we need them on a heavy weekend. Ultimately, I'll have to have that conversation with Waze about modifying that or making how we go about making it permanent. But the nice part about that is there's a conversation ongoing, and having that step is a positive. Waze did actively reach out to us to ask about our needs on residential streets and their, how their mapping system is diverting traffic to those residential streets. So for them to separately reach out to us was also a positive note from my perspective. So some of the pushback that they're getting, I think, is starting to work. And we're continuing to be insistent and collaborative with them versus heavy-handed. So we're trying to toe the line on that one and really work with them. Intersection markings is a category that's new to us. We have talked about, I think at the last meeting, a little bit about marking intersections, signalizing intersections as a sort of a keep clear, clear-the-box type of a thing. Also, the potential for cameras, intersection cameras, that would identify those who are blocking the intersection when they shouldn't be and would provide the opportunity for citations through that means. It's a different way of handling traffic. It's the sort of the stick instead of the carrot. And we're not sure on how that addresses the cut-through traffic rather than sort of handles it on the back end. Certainly worth conversation. We have done not a lot of advanced work on that one, but if the council's interested, we could certainly look at that in our strategic priorities. As you're aware, we had a number of weekend events this year. The weekend events were numerous trials in various forms to bring a sort of a take-it-to-the-streets type event to the downtown. So being able to close Santa Cruz in various formats was educational to all of us. We learned a lot in terms of putting on events and also in terms of how the traffic flows and what we need to do in terms of traffic. We have found from a staff perspective that they're resource-intensive, doing the closures and making sure closures are safe in terms of the people inside the closure and the vehicles approaching the closure to make sure they're safe as well. So a lot to go into that. We have also found that weekend events are very difficult to run without having the closure in place because the pathways, again, those pathways around the events quickly become known to the applications and they utilize those quite a bit. We've got a traffic signal upgrade in progress. We do have a $500,000 grant from VTA that we're working with. We're also trying to leverage those dollars as matching funds for future grants that would allow us to continue to move forward with our smart technology implementation on traffic signal upgrades. This is a project that we're continuing to push on. We have a greater need than we have funding right now. But hopefully, that will materialize as we continue to look for grant opportunities to move forward with that. And a couple others, school busing is a project that we're just starting to kick off this week with some rollout meetings. And we'll be bringing a consultant onboard very soon to help us manage this and do the feasibility study. So a very concentrated study on whether this is viable for the town or not. And really doing the outreach to parents and seeing what the ridership is going to be. This is a congestion management program. It's not an all-inclusive bus-every-student-to-school program. So it's really focused on where can we have an impact on traffic with this. So that'll be part of the assessment as we go forward. And then most recently, at the last council meeting, we brought forward an auto trip reduction initiative, which really starts to look at traffic holistically and to identify what we can do to change the culture in town in terms of transportation. And sort of one of our goals in that, if you think about it from a big picture, is if we can get folks, when they're about to go somewhere, to at least think about what mode they're going to use in order to get from point A to point B, I think that would be a great small victory for us. And ultimately, we hope to change the culture and get folks out walking and by- And ultimately, we hope to change the culture and get folks out walking and biking and taking advantage of the beautiful amenities the town has to offer in that regard. I'll stop and pause and take a breath and let the town attorney handle some of the legal items.
Good evening, council, mayor, senator. Based on your direction at our last meeting that we discussed this item, I've done some preliminary, very preliminary research on the ability to file litigation against the mapping application companies. My research showed that I was not able to find any lawsuits in the United States that have currently been filed against mapping application companies in regards to cut-through traffic. I also talked to various colleagues at the California League of Cities meeting that we had in September and talked to them about if any of their cities were considering any recourses or litigation against the various mapping companies, and and I was not able to find any that were even considering that at this point in time. Although my research didn't divulge that there's no one else doing it, that doesn't mean that we we couldn't attempt to file litigation. Everyone knows that anyone can sue anybody, and there's many potential causes of actions that I can think of, including the ones that most have mentioned, you know, the public nuisance theories and many others. So it is potentially still to file litigation. It's just that no one else currently is considering that that I was able to find. However, in my opinion at least, the idea of filing a lawsuit in order to bring the mapping companies to the table immediately and get a settlement is is just not realistic, in my opinion. In all likelihood, litigation would be very, very, very expensive, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and probably wouldn't reach a settlement quickly. I base that opinion on on a few different research items in that they are, and the mapping companies are, in very expensive litigation amongst themselves as to who's developed the different mapping applications and are spending millions on just their own litigations, fighting over how important these mapping applications are to them. And they spent billions of dollars even on their own mapping applications. You know, I say in the report, Waze now boosts over 50 million users, and millions of the people are using it in order to try to alleviate and and find different ways to get through traffic. And also, if you look at every single time, you know, any article talks about it, the Waze PR keeps on their their core principle is, is that the public roads are intended for the public, and they intend to use those to help their users navigate the different roadways. In addition to those core principles, and what I found also, there's also a very interesting theory that they might use as a defense, and that's found in Forty Seven U.S. Section Two Thirty that provides immunity actually to from liability for producers and users of an interactive computer service who publish information from others, kind of way these mapping applications would be used. I think it's a stretch, but it is possible that that may be why many aren't filing this litigation, is because they believe they have immunity from this from this type of liability. So based on my previous research, I don't believe we should be filing litigation against the mapping companies. I think, as Matt said, you know, we're making progress, working cooperatively with the mapping companies, instead of trying to be heavy-handed and and file litigation. That being said, you know, if council's direction is, is let's go file litigation, then you should direct me, and I'll and I'll find, you know, a law firm that is willing to take this on, and I can bring back a much more in detail of what type of cause of action would be viable, and we and we could discuss the pros and cons of that and the likelihood of success, and all of that would occur in closed session, so you can get a very viable picture of whether litigation is even a possibility.
So with that, in your in your packet, I provided a table similar to this. This one has the the projects that we've been working on, identified and read, much as I did in the PowerPoint presentation. It was really meant as a working document for you to to try and provide another tool for you as you're as you're working through the discussion. Wanted you to be able to see our perspective on the impact on cut-through traffic, the impact on overall congestion, the impact on safety, and sort of a timeframe for implementation. The columns that are left blank are left blank on purpose for your use, if you wanted to use this as a crib sheet. And we we do have a version that we can put up on the screen if it's helpful for you as you as you work through this. But we do look forward to the to the conversation amongst the council this evening, and certainly are willing and able to facilitate in any way possible. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Director Morley. Council members, any questions of staff? Councilmember Johnson?
I have a couple, if I might. Mr. Morley, could you go back to your first slide, please? So our staff report, and my recollection of the September meeting, was that the input we got from the public was, in the majority, against a continued closure. And our staff report says that the council did not adopt staff's recommendation for a continued closure. So I'm wondering why the first bullet point says, what form should the closure take? That assumes that the council is going to continue a closure. So why why is it presented in that way? And does council, in fact, have the option at this meeting to say, we would like to discontinue the closure?
Yeah, thank you for that question. And the the verbiage had been meant to to provide the opportunity for council to do a modified closure, the closure as it's been, or no closure at all, and that was the intent of the language.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Then you presented some data early on in your slides that I wanted to ask about. Yeah, these. Well, actually, the next one, or both of them. So this one, okay. This is 2017, counts. Do you have any data from 2016's for there to be a comparison?
We we did provide 2017 in the giant giant spreadsheet that came out in the addendum.
2016.
2016, sorry, yes. But I don't think that I have the analysis for the comparisons readily available.
So that's okay. So just looking at this slide, just looking at the 20% increase on the west side, I thought I heard you characterize that in your presentation as basically a continuation of the status quo, approaching from the west from Los Gatos Boulevard, because at least my personal experience is with the closure as it's configured now, all the traffic has moved to Los Gatos Boulevard and the collector's streets on the east, because there's no reason to go west, given that North Santa Cruz is closed. Does that 20? So are you characterizing the 20% increase as a status quo?
No. So the the status quo was the 3% on the Saturdays. So if if we're looking at the table on the westbound column, the there's pre-closure, 1,896 vehicles that came down Highway Nine from Los Gatos Boulevard, and post-closure, 1,944, a 3% increase. And that was what I was calling a status quo. So the 3% number, certainly the 20% number is not a status quo number.
Okay. So that's obviously worsening condition on the west side.
It is a worsening condition.
Let's see. The other question was about your slides on a roundabout, assuming the council wants to do a roundabout. It struck me that you were assuming that the roundabout would be in conjunction with a closure. Were you assuming that a roundabout would be in conjunction with a closure or be a different configuration of that intersection with an open freeway ramp?
So the the structure of the roundabout is intended to allow for ongoing operations of that intersection with selective closing as the council directs in the future. So it provides us the 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 managed intersection. So a roundabout is essentially similar to a to a traffic signal from a Caltrans perspective, a managed intersection that allows for free flow. However, should the council decide to that a closure was something they wanted to do in the future, it facilitates that to bring the cost down, the cost of implementing a closure down. That's part of the discussion we'd like to have tonight, is is this something that we should consider continue to move forward with? And that's that's why we brought the open-ended question and are looking for the for the council's direction on where where we're going with this in the future. Are we are we interested in continuing with a with a roundabout and facilitating an ongoing closure? Are we interested in a closure, a temporary closure next summer? Or do we need to redirect at this point? And that's the discussion we're hoping to have.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, I'm going to ask a question on the roundabout related to that. The design, understanding its conceptual in nature, that design does not, it does not preclude a closure or does not, it's the same design regardless of a closure is directed or not? Is that correct?
That's correct. So this this could be something that never ever sees a closure, if that was a council's desire. It could still be a great project for that location in terms of really driving the vehicle speeds down as they come off the freeway freeway ramp and and still facilitating facilitating a nice even flow of traffic there. Also provides an opportunity for a gateway element if the council so desires. We'll have those, should we move forward, we'd have those design element conversations at a future date.
And then, just a quick question. There have been some closures that the town, well, let me clarify. There have been some closures that have happened because of accidents on Seventeen that have been out of our control, and we've closed it because of either CHP or or other requests from Caltrans. This would help, only help in those areas, correct?
That's correct. Those those closures happen at the request of request of other agencies, and yes, this would help with that.
Okay. Council members, Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, staff, for a good verbal and written report. A couple of questions. We talked about changing the street designations, I think, from collector to residential. And the thought was that if we did that, then the traffic apps would not send cars through residential streets. Could the apps, in fact, change their programming so that they send cars through residential streets?
Yes. The answer, the the down-and-dirty answer is yes. The the follow-up to that is, we believe that, so that, again, the apps are maintain some secrecy around how their algorithms work. But we believe that they they prioritize streets based on their capacity to carry traffic, so that our our local collectors are different from our residential streets, and that they would fall down the list of prioritization, and and our hope would be that that reduces some of the traffic. So this, this among with the other steps that we're taking, starts to to take little bits of chunks away from the impacts on our residential streets. And that's that's sort of been the goal, working with apps, is how how can we start to carve away a little bit to protect our residential streets?
But if the apps sense, read that all of these streets, other than residential, are bogged down, they could direct traffic onto the residential streets. There's nothing we can do to stop that.
Correct.
Okay. Then, with regard to the roundabout, I understand from what you're saying and what you've written that that roundabout could allow traffic to flow onto Seventeen or could stop it. What is your sense of the vehicles exiting Seventeen onto Santa Cruz? My observations, my life experience is, people come off that Seventeen very fast. From your location of the roundabout, is it your sense that they will or have the ability to slow down and will know to slow down?
Yeah. So the roundabout is structured to facilitate that, so it it tapers early and provides a restricted, a more restricted street to make it, to bring the speeds down, sort of like a traffic calming element. So well in advance of that, and you can see on the on the map on the page, well, at the bottom of the page, the orange part would be a physical median island that would be constructed in order to to really pinch the roadway and slow speeds down. There would be speed signage as well.
All right, thank you. With regard to ramp metering, and this might be premature at this point, but with regard to ramp metering, let's say Highway Nine and Seventeen, it doesn't seem to me that if we had that, it would help in our summer traffic. What is your sense?
So a couple of things. So intuitively, I think I would agree with you. The the stories that I've, the information that I've heard in talking with with Caltrans is in the corner, sort of corner of Five Eighty and and Six Eighty, the the communities there were experiencing significant cut-through traffic. They put metering ramp, metering lights on the ramps and and changed the dynamic. People were no longer willing to get off the freeway and and have to wait in line at a metering light, so they they stayed on the freeway. Whether that would happen in Los Gatos or not, you know, we we just don't know. So that's sort of the anecdotal knowledge that we have on what what's happened in other communities. Very interested in in the council's perspective. I don't I don't think that we have a study to show, nor nor could we really develop one that to show whether they would work for us or not. So it's a little bit of a of a try it and see what happens type of a type of a work element. A lot of communities that have metering lights like what they do for the flow on the on the freeway. So if you can even out the flow on the freeway and make merging easier, it helps to keep the flow going and increases that that curve that we talked about on the on that, it smoothes that curve a little bit, so there's not such an impact on on the freeway infrastructure. So that would be the beauty of the of the metering lights, is being able to merge the traffic on a little bit more smoothly and alleviate traffic that way. As I mentioned in my report, there does tend to be an impact on local streets, and that's why local jurisdictions tend not to like metering lights.
And would it also be at summer traffic or non-summer traffic, again, using Highway Nine and Seventeen, would we have a queuing backup issue for cars waiting to get on Seventeen?
We would, we would anticipate that, yes. Whether it's worse or better than today, we just don't know.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. So getting to the question of the the roundabout and whether we can, or closures or continued closures and so forth, is it, does staff have any scientific data or opinion of, does the closure make it worse when what people are calling East Los Gatos, off of Kennedy and and Shannon and so forth? You know, I understand people are getting affected. It's hard to tell whether it was just a worst day with even more traffic or it was because of the closure. So I know people feel affected. The question is whether staff has any scientific data to say, yes, it's because of.
So we haven't done counts on the residential streets. I think it's pretty clear in 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 looking at how the mapping programs are directing traffic on on the weekends, that they're directing them onto those residential streets. We ran a series of snapshots of directions taken from from three locations, from from Cupertino, from Evergreen College in San Jose, and from Valley Fair, so three different freeway directions coming towards Los Gatos and headed to a destination of Santa Cruz. And all of the mapping programs sent them on the same path on residential streets, down Cherry Blossom and Anglewood and those, that that east part of of the of the town. So it was, it's very clear that they've been, they've been sending them that direction, and the impact this year has been significantly greater from last year, based on observation of what we've heard from residents and my personal observations on the weekends being out here. So I think that it has been a change in dynamic. I think maybe in in past years, the the traffic has stayed on on, for instance, Los Gatos Boulevard versus wandering into the into the residential streets, and we've seen that dynamic change this year, where the residential streets have have really been been impacted. And that goes back to why I think a valid priority is is protecting those residential streets. There may be some further discussion on the larger streets like Los Gatos Boulevard that are that are intended to carry a heavier heavier traffic load, but but for a for sort of creating a victory and a manageable target, protecting the residential streets, I think, is a is a good one.
So if I could follow up. So so the question really is, has something changed in the apps that they're now sending them more into the streets? Is traffic even worse this year than in past years? It feels like it. You know, one evidence was, even with the closure, we were still getting downtown full of cars on certain really bad weekends, which we didn't get last year when we did it. So I don't know. Things are changing, more cars, apps are acting different, something. So we don't really have anything that measures whether they're still sending them into those neighborhoods if the the closure is not there. That, we're just guessing at this point.
Yeah. So I think I think the the apps, as we talked about, prioritize the streets based on the size of the streets and the ability to keep traffic moving. So the the apps would default to the larger streets. So first default is freeways, and then on onto the the arterials before they they start sending it to the to the smaller streets. But certainly, if the pathway is quicker in terms of minutes or lengths of cars saved, they would direct them into the residential streets.
Question and observation, observation first. As a resident of the east side, I know I'm not a presenting data, but it is absolutely, positively, completely worse, and it's because there is no reason for an app to send anybody to Winchester or to towards North Santa Cruz if they want to go to the beach, because the way to get there is, the only way to get there is Los Gatos Boulevard. So there is no question, but that is worse on the east side. That's just an observation. My real question is, the proposal for the one-way street on North Santa Cruz and University, page seventeen of, page seventeen, page seven of our staff report says, talks about that, and it's page seventeen of, page seventeen, page seven of our staff report says, talks about that, and it says, "This option cannot be sufficiently analyzed without some form of a third-party analysis." And I'm wondering, why is that? Why couldn't the council say, "Next Sunday, I'm going to make Santa Cruz one-way and let's see what happens. And next Tuesday, I'm going to make University the other way." Why would we, why do we need to do a third-party analysis versus just trying it?
Yeah. So there's a number of complexities with changing the directions of the streets. Number one being signals. I think with, without, you know, I'm open to pilot programs, I'm open to trying things, I'm open to new ideas. So we can certainly try anything. I think putting anything into place for any substantial period of time would take a study to identify what that would do to, we would advise a study to identify what that would do to traffic patterns and impacts on local streets around that area. One of the things that we've certainly found with the traffic is that there's a ton of unintended consequences where the traffic flows where we never thought it would ever go. And we'd want to do everything we could to address that as much as we can in foreseeing it. But from a pilot program, I think it's something that we can handle. From an ongoing infrastructure perspective, there's some work that needs to be done in terms of identifying what needs to happen to the signalization, what happens with traffic coming off, where it goes, how it flows, what that does to the downtown area.
And I would just say from a liability standpoint, just saying that we're going to do a Tuesday of a one-way and then we'll go back to it the following day from a standpoint of striping and lane and signage could create just a catastrophe for us. So we would have to do some signage and restriping at a minimum to do that.
Just to follow up on your response, Mr. Schultz. So for example, when we first tried the closure of North Santa Cruz, we didn't re-stripe anything, we didn't do anything. We just put up mobile signs that said "closed." So why would it be different for a pilot if it was publicized well enough in advance and you had it for a weekend? And Captain D. Antoni is looking at me like, "Oh, my God." Why couldn't you use the same kind of structure that we use to completely close down a freeway ramp and go, "Okay, we're going to try this" and collect data? I understand that you cannot change, completely change infrastructure unless you've got designs and everything else. We know that from the Almond Grove, among other things. But why couldn't we try something? That's my question. In the same way we tried the closure.
We can do with closures, you can put up the borders, the K rails to prevent anybody from going there. But anyone from Santa Cruz who hasn't seen, no matter how much we publicize it, that's coming off the freeway at 17 and has done that maybe every week, one day a week, and goes straight through, you would be creating some potential liability without proper signage and, like I said, striping, because people see the yellow line and assume right away that's going both ways as opposed to a single white line, which you would have. If it's two lanes coming down Santa Cruz, one way or the other, it's going to have the white line instead of the yellow lines. So there would have to be some, in my mind at least, there would be, or you could have potential liability for any accident.
I think that opens up some opportunities for conversation around the downtown area and what happens there. Certainly, having two lanes of traffic going one way on Santa Cruz without doing something with that yellow stripe down the middle is very, very difficult and challenging from, as Mr. Schultz has said, from a liability perspective. But culling off one lane and doing one lane of traffic might be something that we could work through. It's super resource-intensive in terms of making it happen. And one of the things that happens with traffic is it settles out over a period of time. So it would give you a snapshot, but it wouldn't necessarily give you how things settle out over time as people start to adjust to this new type of normal that would be in place if it was a permanent installation. But of course, as I started the conversation, we're interested to hear the ideas that we didn't bring forward and this would certainly be one of those. If I could just jump in on a couple of numbers that are in the spreadsheet. On 2016, westbound travel, so if you compare with the numbers up there, I'll just read a couple of dates and what the numbers were for comparison basis. So on June 25th, 2016, headed westbound was 2175, so a little bit higher. On July 2nd was 2088. And on May, sorry, that's a 2017 number. So those are the two Saturday numbers that we have data for in the report that provide comparisons for you from 2016.
Ms. Director Morley, what could be helpful, I understand it won't be ready for tonight's meeting, but having that, if you could put that on some kind of a document so that public as well as ourselves can look at it after?
Absolutely.
Council, any further questions? Councilmember Leonardis?
Thank you, Mayor Sec. Mr. Morley, we have this situation where we have this artery, Highway 17, and every time the blood chokes going through there, the whole town has a heart attack. And that's the problem. And in the past, it has been discussed that widening 17 is too much money, which on the surface it looks, it won't be cheap, obviously. It's in the general plan that we don't want to widen it. It was said that aesthetically, it might not be as pretty if we remove the oleanders going down the middle of it. But rather than thinking in terms of widening the road physically, what about taking the existing roadway and modifying it and putting in a movable barrier like they have on the Golden Gate Bridge all the way up to, somebody said Redwood Estates? So it can be moved to three lanes during rush hour in the morning, move it three lanes this way. I guess you'd call that northbound. And then on those beach days, it can move, so it can be three lanes. And then working with the existing pavement between Lark Avenue where the first choke is, and it starts to roll a little bit, down to two lanes and then goes back, starts to choke going up the hill. But I guess between Lark and Highway nine, taking the existing pavement we have and try to re-stripe it and maybe add a little here and there and get another lane out of that, so it doesn't choke there. And then it gets to the point where the movable barrier starts and it can go up. Has anybody thought of just looking at the existing pavement and try to modify it to handle more capacity, which seems to be an idea whose time has come throughout California, a cheap solution?
Certainly a viable solution. I think those who are commuting over to 17 are experiencing a lot, over 17 now are experiencing a lot of that anyways as they jog back and forth around construction activities. Still an expensive and lengthy venture, but something we can open the conversations with if that's the council's direction and begin those talks with Caltrans.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, so I am now going to open up for verbal testimony. And so if anyone would like to speak on the subject, just a reminder, when you come to the podium, just state your name. You'll have three minutes. The yellow indicates you'll have 30 seconds remaining. Red indicates red. I'm sorry, red indicates stop, that your three minutes are up. There will be, because it's a study session, I think we'll have questions of the speaker. So if you could just remain until those questions have been asked. And then if you have specific questions of us, what we tend to do is we compile those and then at the end of the verbal testimony, we'll address all of them at once. And I know our Senator Bell is here to listen to a lot of the concerns and he'll do the same so that at the end of the questioning, if there are answers that he can provide from a state perspective, he'll be able to do that as well. Okay? Okay, so let's kick it off with our own Montesereno Mayor, Mayor Ann Standig.
Madam Mayor, members of the council and Senator Bell and staff, thank you for the report. It was very helpful to read it and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'd first like to say a couple of words as mayor and then a couple of words as a resident. So as a mayor, I just want to indicate that our city and the town in the past have worked very well together on solving traffic and safety issues by virtue of the Dave's Avenue Winchester intersection, which we both worked, not myself, but both municipalities worked very well together on solving that. And I'm hopeful that we can use some of that same effort to solve the problem on Masol and Highway nine, which is a very dangerous intersection and one that, I travel it every day and have done so for 19 years. Also, I want to indicate that the city of Montesereno has passed its first reading of a Better Streets Commission, which we will be voting on at our next meeting, which will be a commission of residents to work on safety and better flow of traffic through our community. And we are clearly pledged to working together with the town to try to solve these problems because Highway nine is a very significant artery for us. As a resident, I live on Bachman Avenue, at the very, that little island of Bachman Avenue that's Montesereno and have to pass through Los Gatos, not have to, I do pass through Los Gatos every day and enjoy it. Some days, weekends absolutely not. I think Councilmember Jensen's comments about traffic last year versus this year on the cut-through streets was much better last year when the streets were closed and there were signs saying that "local residents only." And it was very difficult, if not impossible, to get through many of those streets. This year, I can tell you that from my house at the end of Bachman Avenue to try to get to Santa Cruz in my vehicle, I could not move. The traffic was absolutely deadlocked and people were going in the opposite direction trying to get through to Santa Cruz Avenue or anywhere, just because the applications were just sending people in circles virtually. So we've got to do something about that. Because if an emergency had occurred, somebody needed life support, if there was a fire or a crime issue going on of some nature, I've got 30 seconds, and it would be a serious problem. On weekdays, the traffic signals on Santa Cruz Avenue and on University create a terrible problem for anybody who lives in the community. It may be helpful for people passing through that aren't doing anything in the community, but if you want to get to Santa Cruz, if you want to turn onto Santa Cruz from Highway nine, you can't do it. You've got to wait. Sometimes I've timed it as many as 30, three or five minutes to get through that intersection. I had more, but that's, my time's up.
Thank you. Mayor, I have a question for you. What else would you like to share with us?
Thank you. I think one of the most important issues on the weekend is utilizing downtown. It is extremely, I mean, my wife and I visit the restaurants all the time and we like to have brunch and lunch on Saturdays and Sundays and usually we'll walk down in that direction. And if you talk to any of the people that operate restaurants who are paying very high rents, you know, because of what's happened just with the economics in our community, they're just not seeing the traffic. Dinner time's different because of the flow that we saw earlier about, you know, the traffic not being so bad. But they are clearly impacted. And I know if you've probably talked with them or speak with them about those issues, you'll see that that's a significant issue. And that affects the life of your residents and ours as well, because I know a lot of our folks, you know, come into this town as well. The other point that I last wanted to state was about Masol. If you're on Highway nine at the end of the workday trying to make a left-hand turn onto Masol, there is a crosswalk there that lights up and fortunately, sometimes somebody's trying to use it and it stops the traffic, so people can make a left-hand turn onto Masol. But normally, every day, it's kind of taking your life in your hands. I know I'm being a little dramatic. But trying to cut through that traffic is virtually, you know, it's really very difficult and it's dangerous. And I know that I've found that to be terribly problematic, notwithstanding the fact that we had a death just in the last, you know, two months, I believe, with a resident of ours that was trying to use the crosswalk but didn't use it, I guess, the way it could have been used. But the problem is, it's all this traffic that's getting off Highway 17. It's problematic. And I really want to compliment Councilmember Leonardis's idea about the, what he was talking about on Highway 17. I know that would be a tremendous improvement to keep traffic flowing. I frankly would like to see a traffic signal at Masol because frankly, if it stops traffic and people find that they can't get through quickly, they'll find another way to get around and keeping them from going through on Highway nine, I think would be a good idea. So anyway, I want to thank you and thank you for your questions. Let me talk for another few moments.
Okay. So any further questions of the mayor? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Sec. Mr. Ann Standig, or Mayor Ann Standig?
Yeah.
Depending on whether you're a citizen or a mayor tonight.
Depends on the question.
There are underground crosswalks. I saw them on the Alameda, where one can enter on one side of the street, go under the street and come up on the other side of the street. Do you think that might be an idea that we can use on Highway nine in Masol?
Wow, that, building a tunnel, that would be, it's a possible idea to consider. We were once working, trying to work with Caltrans to try to solve problems on Highway nine because we have a lot of residents that live, you know, closer towards Saratoga that use Dave's Avenue School for their kids going to school. And we talked about building a bridge or a tunnel. And, you know, both of those concepts were just terribly expensive. But I think certainly, you know, a tunnel or a bridge over that area would be helpful for pedestrians. I think you're still going to be left with the traffic issue. And that, I don't know, the police department can probably speak to the effects that that may have had upon accidents at that particular intersection. But I know that dealing with the traffic part, you know, I don't think a tunnel or a bridge would solve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, you know, I know as the West Valley mayors have looked at how we can use our own concerted efforts to help pressure along, our Caltrans along Highway nine. And so if you and your town, city manager come up with other ideas that we can collaborate on, we'd appreciate.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you.
Sue Farwell?
Good evening, Sue Farwell, 113 Edelen Avenue. Mr. Morley, would you mind putting up the widening in the one lane? So first, I want to talk briefly about Highway 17. And I know it's not in our general plan. I feel that it's an error on the town to take the widening of Highway 17 off the Measure E Transit Authority. I believe that if we had three lanes of traffic from Lark Avenue through the Highway nine, that we would actually eliminate most of our cut-through traffic. Even if Highway 17 was only traveling at 30 miles an hour, that's still faster than any of the cut-through traffic that would come through town. So I think that's a priority. I know it's going to be jumping through hoops to get it back on to the measure, but I think that should be a main priority for this council. Going back to the one lane through downtown Los Gatos. And I think that we need to look at this issue globally. It's the traffic that has impacted our residents throughout the town is drastic. And the traffic that's impacted our historic downtown district is drastic. And we've always prided ourselves in our historic downtown district. And in the last two years, as you can see the sales tax, you guys are considering a sales tax increase. The sales tax is continuing to decrease. And if we don't do something to protect the historic downtown district and our neighbors and look at this globally, I think it's a great time, especially with the North Forty coming online within the next two to three years, creating even more impact. I think that we should look at revitalizing downtown, making it one lane through North Santa Cruz Avenue, enacting that traffic circle, widening our streets so it'd be one lane with 60-degree angled parking going south on North Santa Cruz Avenue, widening our sidewalks to three to four feet, increasing our outdoor dining opportunities, increasing the opportunity for our retail stores to put out more displays, creating a pedestrian-friendly, user-friendly downtown that will hopefully continue to flow traffic through onto Highway 17 when it is open. And if not, the traffic circle will turn them back around. I don't know if we need to make University Avenue one-way the entire way. Perhaps it's just the block there by Old Town. But I think that this is something that's very important for the town council to consider. Widening of Highway 17, revitalizing our downtown and trying to create a pedestrian-friendly, user-friendly and getting people off the surface streets of our neighborhoods and getting them traffic moving. And I think Highway 17 is the key. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farwell. Any questions? Ms. Farwell, you have a question?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Farwell. I'm interested in your ideas and your comments. I'd like to give you a hypothetical.
Yes.
Hypothetically, if there is a parking garage built at the end of North Santa Cruz, the south end, what would you think of eliminating the parking on North Santa Cruz in order to widen the sidewalks and then let two lanes? widen the sidewalks and then let two lanes go one-way?
Depending on the numbers, I would not be opposed to that. One of the things I wanted to mention, I ran out of time, is I actually believe as well as taking some of the traffic off the Almond Grove and off the University, we do have an alleyway that runs from that parking lot that you're considering developing that runs all the way down to Bachman Avenue. And I believe that that alleyway, as narrow as it is, has a lot of deliveries, I believe that if North Santa Cruz Avenue is one direction heading south, I believe that alleyway should be one direction heading north. And then it allows people to, to, to go and bypass the Almond Grove District, come down that alleyway and have access to the parking lots that are actually on the east side. And it would be an easy flow of traffic with the new construction of that new parking lot if it was a one-way down, down that alleyway all the way to Bachman.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Farwell.
Thank you.
Ginger Rowe?
I'm Ginger Rowe from Timeout Clothing and I'm also a resident on the east side of Los Gatos. I just want to reiterate what Ms. Farwell said. Hallelujah, this town needs to be redeveloped. We need to revitalize our downtown. We need to do it before North Forty comes because we're going to be in big, big trouble if they open and we still look like what we do now. We, I completely concur with trying the one-way. Do it now. Don't wait till summer when it's really backed up and really problematic. We need to fix it and we need to test it. It's not as bad right now. I really like the idea of right now doing the quick fix of the, I think it was brought up in the September meeting of don't block the box intersections. That seems like a simple fix for the town with striping or painting or whatever you do in the intersection, not a huge outlay of cash. I love the idea of being more pedestrian-friendly. There's alternatives in the meantime during the holiday time to block off certain small areas of the North Santa Cruz Avenue for pedestrian-friendly shopping and dining for temporary use during the holidays. One of the thoughts that somebody had, we were talking, I had talked with Matt Morley about the parade day closure and the street closures and one of the thoughts was, if the street is already closed on the day of the parade, why would you open it immediately and push everybody back out of town? And why not consider keeping the, the parade, shorten the closure and keep the street closed during the parade for an extended period of time because what happens? And that way, we can encourage people to, you know, hang around, shop, eat and spend the day in Los Gatos. But what happens is the street sweepers come in and everybody is rushed off the streets and raced out, out of town and then it, it kills our business on a Saturday. So, and that's a big, important day for us on a, a holiday weekend. It's the way it is, it has been for years. Otherwise, maybe we can consider in the future doing the parade on Sundays because that's never as big of a day. And one of the questions I wanted to ask you guys about recently, I experienced weekend before last when the fires and the smoke was so bad in the valley, I had to leave town. I was working in town and I was driving around town. I had to leave and go out to the Central Valley. And as I was leaving Highway seventeen heading north, the traffic was backed all the way up past Camden Avenue. And I don't know the numbers, but there was no problem getting through town. There was no backups, there was no traffic congestion in any town downtown or on the east side of town because I traveled on both sides. And then I got on the freeway and it's completely stopped as if it was a summer weekend way past Camden and dead stop, not even moving. And there was no problem and the, the ramp was closed. Please don't close the ramp again this summer.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Rowe? Okay, thank you. Jennifer Kroll?
I have a boutique downtown and I'm also a resident and was born in this town. My mother has the oldest retail establishment in the town, so we've seen it all. I'd like to say that we live in the heart of Silicon Valley and if we are not prepared to pivot quickly, we're going to get eaten alive by the other retail establishments and towns and things and developments happening. So, I think that is an underlying thing. I think growing up in this city, in this town, we haven't been able to pivot that quick, that quickly on ideas. We've gotten locked up in surveys and that's my experience. So, I think your idea, Councilwoman Jensen and Leonardo, both of the movable barriers on seventeen are a brilliant idea to try. If Golden Gate Bridge can do it, we certainly can try it. I think that the one-way trial is essential. I think that redevelopment is in our town's future and I think that consists of one-way streets, wider sidewalks, outdoor dining, slot parking, those kind of things. We have to get there and I understand it's not going to be an overnight fix, but it is the time, in my opinion now, to try those things. Specifically, Ginger and I had had a meeting with Matt, thanks, Matt, who educated us on all these issues and we understand that it's not a simple fix. There's always going to be a problem that arises from a different solution. So, but we did bring up if, if residents and, and traffic works correctly during these, these town, the street closures that we've had over the summer, then maybe we try for the December month on doing just a holiday stroll area, just Main Street, Elm Street, where it is encouraged for people to just come and stroll, have dinner and just basically close it from Saturday to Sunday, Saturday morning to Sunday evening. So, that it would encourage, we would lose some parking spaces in that quadrant, but it would also encourage people to come, stay, shop, that kind of stuff. We could try it for December and if it works, it could help alleviate some of our problem for the summer. Matt suggested, I think brilliantly, that since we have the parade the first weekend, why don't we try it for that, that weekend? Like, I think he had talked about instead of, and Ginger reiterated that, you know, why push everybody out? Because Saturday is a horrible day for all retail, you know, it's just a done day. We don't make any business. It's really bad, but we love the parade. So, why don't we try it and maybe even keep, you know, a quadrant like slowly open the other places, but keep Bachman to Main open certainly all day Saturday and then maybe even shorten it up on, or just leave it there until Monday and keep it and try it from that. I don't suggest that we would want to do Bachman to Main every, I don't think you need to. I think you just need to do one block and Main to Elm is sufficient. I think also to Councilwoman Jensen, you just, if you're going northbound on one, one-way northbound, you don't have to, it doesn't impact traffic coming off the freeway and, and you do slot parking, I don't know if you're getting what I'm talking about, but I can make a diagram.
Any questions of Ms. Kroll? Thank you, Ms. Kroll.
Thanks.
Catherine Summers?
So, I think I have a desk item. Do you have to put that up? Yeah. Oh, I have to bring it? Okay. Oh, I do have it. All right. Sorry. So, hi. I'm Catherine Summers, Executive Director of the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce. And so, before I actually start, I want to bring up something sort of funny because as I was talking to the, or as I was listening to Matt talk about the ways and the apps and it sort of reminded me a little bit of The Guardians of the Galaxy. I don't know if you've all seen that movie. And at some point, it's you five that are up there and Senator Beal as well, that somehow we, if we really want to kind of take back the town or protect the town, I mean, it really is going to be up to you all to make these decisions for us. So, with that, the other thing I want to bring up is that on every slide we see, there's mixed results. And the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce did a survey recently. We walked the streets, my staff and I, and we had a few volunteers as well, that walked up and down and surveyed every single one of the businesses in the historic downtown area and asked them, one, was there, was business down in the last two summers? And second, would they want to open or keep the road open, on-ramp open or closed next summer? And once again, the results were mixed. Results so mixed that the opening and the closing of the on-ramp was probably, and I have the specifics, we did about nine, we surveyed about ninety businesses. And of those, it was about fifty-four that said to leave it open, another thirty said to keep it closed, and then there were some mixed and some that didn't even want to respond. Those aren't the exact numbers, but I, I can get those for you. It was, it was roughly that. I mean, my point is really that they were mixed results, once again. Nobody's exactly sure what to do. However, the thing that really did stand out in the first question that we asked was business down. And unanimously, business is down. And I think that's where it comes to all of you to make some quick decisions. I know that's not easy. Try some pilot programs. A few other things that, you know, when I talked to so many businesses and particularly when we were walking around, you know, we thought it would be kind of a quick study and instead it was twenty, thirty minutes in each of the, in each of the locations. And what they, what they really said is, does the council and the town really care about us? Do they, do they know what they need? Do they know how to revitalize the community? Do they listen to staff? I mean, staff is, are in some ways the experts here and they've done a lot of studies and so they know. So, are you looking to them to give you guidance as to how to make these decisions as to whether or not to open or close the road, how to deal with ways, how to, you know, redirect traffic? How do you make downtown more appealing? How do you maybe talk to some of the landlords and say, and, and call a meeting with the landlords and say, hey, can we work together in order to?
Going to keep going.
I think the landlord issue is an interesting one and, you know, I, I don't really know how to get into it. What I do know is there's four or five companies that have, or businesses that have told me recently that they are having, and, you know, closing sales because they cannot continue on with the rates that the landlords are charging and then with the summer, with the summer traffic has imposed, you know, what, what they're facing with that summer traffic. And to do that again, another summer, they won't survive. And it's a hard role for me to, to be in this position to have them, you know, have them come to me and say, you know, can I help them at all with this? And it's not really me that's going to help them. It's the five of you and...
So, let's see if we have, I have a quick question. Of the ones that, that you just referred to, were there specifics that they were able to point to that could be helpful? I mean, it's, obviously, there's so much more than the traffic. There's rent, there's everything. But when they say, can you help us with X, what's the X?
I think the X is, is sort of that, how do you make Los Gatos again a destination? Because was it, was it at one time a destination where people didn't care that they had to fight through traffic to get there? Were there, was there enough going on and was it vital enough that people would come no matter what? I, I think that's, I think that's probably it in most of those cases. That's it.
Okay. It looks, did you, anyone? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, so a couple of questions. I guess I would start with, did you do, look at any correlation between your mixed results, you know, let's say those that said keep it closed were those destination businesses where their customers couldn't get to town versus the ones that said keep it open that are more passerbyer businesses? I, you know, in my, I would say we have some of both and maybe some that are a little bit mixed. Was there any correlation there?
Well, so, interesting that you say that. So, for example, and to be transparent, the Hotel Los Gatos, for example, said keep it closed. Testarosa was one of them that says to keep it closed. The Toll House was kind of mixed. I mean, it is, it is really interesting. So, to your, to answer your question, it is the, the small retail shops that would like it open again. And I think the restaurants felt that they did better when it was open. Walgreens, for example, I mean, huge reduction in business when it was closed. So, I mean, again, it's so mixed on who, who does well in it.
So, so second part of the question, I worry a little bit people forget what it was like when it was, was open because we had businesses screaming for us to close it then and also neighbors. So, I, I keep thinking, i- is it really have to be an open or a closed? Or is there something in the middle where we don't close it, you know? So, let's, let's assume that maybe destinations do better some when it, with it open and others do with closed. Maybe we do a partial, close some of the time, open some of the time, maybe half the summer. I don't, I don't know what the right mix is, but has any of that discussion gone on?
Yes. So, in our, you know, travels around town and walking around town and in our discussions, a lot of the business owners did say, you know, perhaps you would open it on a Saturday and close it on a Sunday or vice versa or, you know, so, I mean, they are open for trials and pilot programs. Of course, always the problem is those trials and pilot programs that Matt so eloquently tells us is that they take a long time to study and we don't have time. So, I don't, I don't, I mean, I hesitate even really coming up here because there really aren't answers. I think though we have to try some new things in order, to try new things and communicate. I mean, communication with the business community as to what you're doing and why, I think, is huge, especially with the historic downtown businesses is say, we're going to try this, bear with us, let's all be in this together and, you know, and...
So, third, third question sort of related to this. Is it, is the answer in whether we're open or closed or some other part? Or is, is it something else? I mean, people still have to get to, get to downtown. Is it all about the closure or do, should, or are we talking about something that really hardly makes a difference in, in the problem?
I think you nailed it. I think hardly makes a difference really in the opening and closing of the road. I think it's something else that we're missing and whether it's, yeah, I, I don't know. It's hard for me to answer that question, but I do, I do think it's, it's something that we are missing as a vital part of Silicon Valley and whether it's, you know, how to become that thoroughfare through, you know, to Santa Cruz again and, and what makes us relevant in the whole scheme of the whole valley. I think that's what we're looking for and I, I don't, it's not an easy answer, but I don't think, it's certainly not as easy as opening or closing the road. And so, I think that's where you all have to take a look at everything else that's on, you know, in the general plan and on the docket in terms of, you know, some of the development projects and how, you know, I, I think that's where you really have to start considering things.
Thank you.
Member Jensen?
Couple of questions. First, picking up on your last answer, we're talking tonight about closing the road, opening the road, and that was your survey. So, I'm, so I'm confused about your last discussion. Is your last discussion, we need to do something about town-town and I'm not really going to make that all about whether the road is open or closed versus I'm giving you a survey where everybody I surveyed said my business is down? See, that's, that's where I'm having trouble with your discussion.
So, what I wanted to do tonight, and I, and this is a little bit of my own opinion, I wanted to come tonight based on my survey results and say, darn it, open that road again because that's what I feel you should do. The bummer for me was that when I really did go and survey people face-to-face, that wasn't the answers they gave me. And so, I was conflic, you know, conflicted in how then I present these survey results because they are mixed. And so, I think what's so telling in that, and yet at the same time, the more important question, which really turned out to be the fact that all of their sales were down. Now, are their sales down? I mean, and everyone has their own opinion, but are their sales down because the road is closed or open? I mean, I don't know. Is there maybe something? There is really something bigger going on here.
Follow-up? So, given that the context of your survey was, should we open or close the road? And they said that my business is down in that context and that wasn't mixed, right?
Correct.
So, then I, then you said that you talked to people for twenty to thirty minutes and I'm wondering if you talked to any business that said, my business is, for example, I'm looking at the seven, second page of your survey and there's a business that says, yes, my business is down and it's down a thousand dollars a weekend, but I think the road ought to be open. So, I'm wondering in, when you had those kinds of discussions, why was that business saying, yes, keep it closed? Was that, well, it's all part of a greater problem and I want the downtown revitalized? Or was, was it somehow, I'm okay with the revenue being down a thousand dollars a weekend, so keep the road closed? I, I'm having real trouble understanding that.
As am I. And I think part of that is it was really personal opinions on how people experience their weekends down here. And so, a few of the business owners that... And so a few of the business owners that I spoke to, and I can probably bring him up, I'm not even sure he's on the survey because he was one of the last people I talked to, was Billy's Chowder House, you know? And he, he, he said, you know, keep the road, he said, keep the off, on-ramp closed because my business did better when it was closed. And the reason was, is because he had locals who could get to him, right? And so it was, it was a funny thing. So it was all locals that lived within the area downtown, and there was all of a sudden parking available. And so he said, so his own local people could get there. But he didn't have anybody coming from out of town at that point, and he's a pretty sought after seafood restaurant. So even in talking to him, it was so mixed. Because I said, so would no one else then is coming from out of town? But everybody that is coming from in-town now can come down and they have, they can find parking spaces. So that's, so that was kind of, I don't know if that makes any sense. It was just that there was parking all of a sudden available.
That makes sense if it's dinner time. Was he talking about dinner time?
No, he was talking about brunch because he has a big brunch. And so he was talking about brunch. And so he said, all of a sudden, there was parking available, so the locals could get here. And he, so he actually, while, even though his sales were down, it was a more pleasant atmosphere. That actually is maybe what I'm getting at. It was a more pleasant atmosphere because there wasn't gridlock in front of his restaurant. So people were able to get around town and find parking, but there just weren't as many people coming in. And out-of-towners weren't coming in.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Summers. Randy Chen?
Randy Chen, I live at 118 Edelen Avenue. I also work for the Chamber of Commerce. So I'll just talk a second about that survey because I too was walking around with Catherine. So, I mean, as we said, regardless of the opinions of the business owners about whether they wanted to keep the closure open, or keep the closure or not, everyone's sales were down considerably. Two of the businesses said they were closed on Sundays, Tassels and, I think it was Serapi Rugs. They said they decided to close on Sunday because there just weren't enough people. And so the, whether they thought that it should be open or closed, which really was just a personal opinion, they had really no data. Something has to be done because the businesses in downtown are dying on the summer weekends, and it just can't continue. I certainly don't have the answer. You know, as we know, closing the on-ramp just created different problems that weren't there before. So I live downtown, so I can always get downtown because I can walk, but I couldn't go to Lennard's because I couldn't get home. So, you know, it, it works both ways. It's not just downtown. It's the other businesses that suffer as well because the downtown residents can't, well, they can get there, they just can't get back. But one thing I think we should really look into, which this is a resident perspective, not a chamber perspective, is the Highway 9 interchange. If anybody has taught a teenager how to drive and get on the Highway 9, 17 on-ramp and Highway 9, it is so short, it's not safe. And, and that is what I believe causes the bottleneck on Highway 17. I mean, I think adding a third lane and the zipper thing is pretty good. But if that intersection was a normal length and people actually could merge in a safe manner, I think it wouldn't bottleneck there. And it bottlenecks going north, it bottlenecks going south, it bottlenecks when there's not beach traffic, even when I come home from Santa Cruz. Now, it bottlenecks from Lexington going down, and it's all because of that interchange. And if we are going to spend time with Caltrans on fixing Highway 9, that is where I would put my money. Because if that interchange didn't cause such a mess, then I think Highway 17 would flow a lot better. Thanks.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm talking to you or asking you a question with your chamber hat on.
Okay.
When you went around and you spoke to the businesses, you mentioned that Serape and Tassels closed, I think you said on Sundays. Do you know if now that the ramp isn't closed, if those stores are now opening on Sundays?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, Ms. Chen. Pat Wolfram?
Hi, my name is Pat Wolfram, and I'm a resident of 95033. So you actually have come up with some really good ideas. But I have to say, I've been a citizen for nine years in this town, and I travel a lot. And I actually don't even see much infrastructure being planned or implemented. So I drive Highway 17 twice a day, up and down. I've been through closures, mudslides, everything else. The issue with regards to the long-term, it would be to widen 17. And how you would do that, I know people are much smarter than I am, I think they could come up with that. But you also have, as we all have learned, you also go Old Santa Cruz Highway as soon as you can get over Bear Mountain. There's a lot of different ways that we try to go. Why can't you widen or move the Old Santa Cruz Highway for a potential, another route? The other component that I've seen down in San Clemente, which is in Southern California, is they have a beach train. The beach train goes from Riverside to San Clemente, where the actual beaches. And that actually had decreased a lot of the traffic coming from Riverside on the 91, I think it was. So that's a potential. I know we had trains before, I know that they closed them, et cetera, but that might be something to look at, or maybe even beach buses. Something that you take a lot of people at one car. I actually love some of the short-term that you guys have spoken about. I like the studies that you've done. I think the roundabout is a really good idea. When I come off 17 to go to the post office, I know I have to slow down immediately because I know there's people there. So I think the roundabout's a great idea. I also like the one-way. I think that during certain times, you can do one-way. They do that in, you know, in Santa Clara County, different streets. I like the idea of a parking garage, and people can walk. We talk about people walking, but we want to park on the street. Well, the parking garage could allow parking and actually have walking. And I think one of the other things with the 95033 people, we have a next-door, kind of like a Facebook in a way. And one of the things that they had asked for is, is there a way that if it's closed, that residents that are in 95033 can get through that closed highway? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Angelia Dornor?
Hello, Angelia Dornor, proud resident of the Almond Grove. And a couple of points on things that were discussed earlier. Something that you must remember when you're looking at all of this data is that in 2016, we had significant road construction on Shannon and Kennedy all summer, as well as work by Caltrans on the bridge over 17 on Highway 9. We also had a town work on Highway 9 from LGB to Alberto. In 2017, we did significant work on Lark, on Lark down towards Winchester. We also did significant work on Los Gatos Boulevard all summer long, from Lark all the way to Caldwell. And so the things that are affecting the east side of town could easily be affected by those. And those things need to be considered on an implicit basis, even if not on an explicit basis. With all of the things going on recently, you guys have seen this slide many, many times, my biggest concern, let's talk evacuation. Let's talk CERT, Community Emergency Response. I believe, Rob, that you are the lead for the Almond Grove. That includes this entire area. When we have gridlock, we have no other way to get out. People on the east side have other alternatives. Even if it's a bear, they have alternatives. We have no alternatives. We are blocked 100%. And according to our fire department, that could be 2,500 to 3,000 people are in that area right there. So we need to think about those kinds of numbers. One of the big issues with 17 is that there's less than a two-mile stretch, but we have six different points where you actually have to merge from three to two lanes. If the ramp is closed, if the ramp is open, I'm sorry.
You could take the mic.
17 is usually solid red. But if the ramp is closed, what typically happens, because what I do is I look at the traffic map, the Caltrans map, and I look at the colors all day long, hourly, half-hourly, during the summer and during the winter. That's what tells me if 17 is moving or not, or if we're having cut-through traffic. When the ramp is closed, it stays red to about Highway 9, but it typically changes to orange just after Highway 9, and often is green before it even gets to the downtown ramp. Because that downtown ramp is creating additional significant issues. My solution, as I've talked to many times, all relates to Highway 9. We must consider all the development that's going on. The left-hand side, we need to put a light at Massal. I've talked with you about that a gazillion times. We need a smart signal at Massal, Santa Cruz University in Alberto to make Highway 9 effective all the way across. We also just need to close the on-ramp on 217. There's no reason for it to be open. No reason.
Vice Mayor, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Dornor, could you go through the Highway 17 and the six points much slower? I know you're trying to get in your three minutes, but I'd like to see it a little bit slower, please.
If I didn't, if I didn't want to respond to any of those things up front, I would have done my three. But, you know, I just always have to add something. But I would appreciate the opportunity. Thank you. If you look at the first section over here, which is 85, and you basically have to merge from three to two lanes prior to all of the intersection on Highway 17 and 85. That merger lasts for about, a little less than a tenth of a mile, as far as the frame that you can merge in. Then you come down to 17 on this side where, I'm sorry, where 85 is merging into 17. Then you come down to Lark Avenue, where, once you've crossed the bridge over 85, you turn back into three lanes at Lark. You're doing three lanes on Lark, and you actually get to go all the way, quite a ways, almost a little over a half-mile before you have to get rid of three lanes, back to two lanes again. And then you get to go almost 1.6 miles before you have to go from three lanes to two lanes again and allow for Highway 9 merger. Okay? So then, you only have 0.8 miles before another merger, which is the downtown ramp. So you've got a total of about two and a half miles where you've got five different times where you're going from three lanes to two, to three lanes to two, from three lanes to two, and you have four different merge points. The on-ramp, the last choke point, is the on-ramp on 217 from downtown. The only reason why that ramp even exists is that it got put in place when they were building 17. So that has no purpose. My feeling is just close it and have it open like a train thing for emergencies. When the fire and the police need to get through, that gives them a completely safe route to do a leapfrog over everybody on 17. But as it is right now, they have to go through all the same traffic that blocks it anyway. So it's not even giving our emergency vehicles the opportunity or the luxury of having that access. So that's what I put that for.
Ms. Spector, and then Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Smart signals. You mentioned them. And actually, I was going to ask staff about this, but I'll ask you, get your assessment. I would imagine that you would see smart signals on Highway 9 going east on various cross-streets? Is that what you would see?
Going east on various cross-streets.
On Highway, you would see smart signals on Highway 9, is that correct?
I see, yes, but I believe that they should affect both westbound and eastbound because this, this portion here is not divided.
All right. Well, let me, if we have summer traffic on Highway 9, and it's really, really dense and really, really congested and very close, what advantage would you see with having smart signals in that scenario?
In that scenario, I believe that it would facilitate, actually, Highway 9 might get backed up a little bit beyond west of Massal. But the traffic where it relates to actual being used for business and for transportation, I mean, to really, really make a difference, would be able to flow a lot more freely. But you would have to be able to do it at all four of those intersections to make a difference. And it would have a positive impact on the Highway 17 and 9 interchange without having to do all of the significant infrastructure changes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Ms. Dornor, thank you. I'm just curious, you put up the map of Almond Grove, and you made the argument that Almond Grove, as opposed to people who live on the east side, were locked in. And so I'm curious, if I'm a resident of Vista Del Monte or Vista Del Campo, locked by Kennedy, Loma Alta, Los Gatos Boulevard, Shannon, Inglewood, that are all at a deadlock, how is my situation different than a resident of Almond Grove? Aren't I trapped as well?
You know, I'm not talking about just, you know, the quality of life and being stuck, not being able to get out of your driveway. I'm talking about trying to get to safety. And if you're on the east side of town, you can go the opposite direction on Kennedy Road and go up towards Blossom Hill, go up towards away from wherever the risk...
Blossom Hill, assume Blossom Hill is blocked too, because I know it is. So are you suggesting that my alternative is to go up Kennedy or Shannon to Hicks?
That is an alternative. However, let me just ask you, Ms. Jensen, did you consider all of the construction that our town was doing on Kennedy, Shannon, Los Gatos Boulevard, Lark, and Winchester this last two summers?
So Ms. Say, the mayor doesn't want me to respond. So all I'll say is that they don't, we're talking about weakened traffic at this point for a closure of Highway 9, and that was, the construction wasn't going on during the weekend.
Okay. To respond to your question more directly than, the only way is to get out on Ridgecrest. That is the only way.
Okay. Senator, do you have time for four more speakers?
Yeah.
Okay. So I do need to, we have four more speakers, and then the senator does need to leave, and I want to make sure that he has adequate time to respond. So Lori DeWitt?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori DeWitt, and I'm a resident. But please don't forget the mountain residents. When you block off the ramp, we cannot get into town. I mean, we can get in, but we can't get out. So I can testify to all you businesses. I have not come into town for two years. I spend my money in Scotts Valley because the traffic is so bad. It's quicker to go to Scotts Valley for the post office, for grocery shopping, the hardware store, and the movies. So I do like the roundabout, but I'd like to add a layer to that. And that is a sticker system. They do that for the 49er stadium. The residents have a sticker, and they can go in and out without having to be blocked off. So that will allow the local residents to do their grocery shopping and have lunch, go to the matinee movie. Because that's, I pay my property taxes, and I can't use the town I'm in. So if you have the choke points with the stickers, we can come in, and then you can let us out too. But then, those who are not residents are turned around. So I know it's a difficult problem. We have horrible traffic because of ways up in the mountains. We got people who don't know how to drive on roads up there. So I moved to Los Gatos because I wanted to be part of this town, but I feel like I'm choked off now, and I do spend my money in Scotts Valley. So please don't forget us, because we do want to spend our money and our time here. And I don't do that on the weekends.
Thank you, Ms. DeWitt. Any questions? Thank you. Susan Burnett?
Okay. Good evening. My name's Susan Burnett, and I live at 85 Ellenwood, and I've lived in Los Gatos all but two years of my life. I'm not going to give my age, but, anyway, I want to talk about my experience on the weekends when the ramp is closed. I can get out of my driveway. Our streets are open, and I'm talking about from Ridgecrest to Ellenwood, Broadway, Glenridge, Massal, Tate, and North Santa Cruz. Massal, Tate, and North Santa Cruz Avenue. And I don't understand how they can say traffic is, the businesses do better when it's open, because when it's open, my neighborhood is totally impacted, as well as North Santa Cruz Avenue. I mean, you just cannot move. It's very, very frightening to feel stuck in your home. It's very frightening. So I was hearing a lot of people going on about having it open, and how they want it to be open, but the ramp, but I want it to be closed, especially in the summer months. It's just, you can't, you can't move, you can't, you can't get out of your driveway, the whole neighborhood's impacted. It's very frightening, and I'm a nurse, I have my master's in nursing, and I get fearful for health, you know, if you had a heart attack, I don't know, there's a lot of safety issues. But I just wanted, I just wanted to be a voice for people on the west side of Los Gatos that really do enjoy having the ramp closed, and that it really should be considered. And I don't know who's saying that it's not a good idea, but there are a lot of people who really enjoy that ramp being closed in the summer months, so that's all I wanted to-
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Alex Holt?
Good evening, fine folks, and our lovely committee here. Thank you for listening to me. So one thing that's really interesting to me is, as we're talking about all these things, there's a lot of expensive projects that could be solutions, there's a lot of, a lot of different ideas. The thing that we forget is that it all costs money. And the fact is that our sales tax is way down, and our business community is hurting very, very much. And I feel like we need to start in the right direction. We need to vitalize or downtown so that we get the sales tax back, and that people enjoy coming to Los Gatos, and it's a fun place. And I think that is very, very crucial, because when the money starts coming in, now we have very smart people up here that can easily direct that money to solutions and solve problems. If we have those unfunded liabilities and other things that are weighing down, as well as our money coming in goes down, that's called a bankruptcy. And I'm not saying that's where we're heading, but it doesn't look very good for Los Gatos if we continue down this path. It's not positive. I forgot to mention that I'm the former president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I also am the owner of Holt's Restaurant, soon-to-be Flight's Restaurant here in Los Gatos. You asked a very good question, I believe it was Mariko, what's the X factor? Didn't answer it very clearly, because it's very complex. But in my opinion, it is not that Los Gatos in no way is not good, it's that the competition is so much better. Other towns are doing a lot of things to make a difference. There's events, there is road closures, there is partnerships, and there's things happening. So people now go downtown, they go to Willow Glen, they go to Campbell, they go other places. So we used to be exclusive as like the destination to go for a great experience, walking around, farmer's market, shopping, good restaurants. We're not that anymore, so we need to compete. That is, in my opinion, the X factor. So we also have a big problem with the landlords still charging the three to five dollar a square foot, like all the thriving business communities like Campbell and other places, where you can actually support a business at those rates, because there's people everywhere. In Los Gatos, that's not the case. There is not people everywhere. We solved our own parking problem by basically telling people, stay on the freeway, don't come to Los Gatos, and it's not good. Oh, wow, time flies. I love the suggestions from the council, trying things and making it actually happen instead of talking about it. The parking garage, I think, is very, very important to get it built and get it done and stop talking about it. I think add the roundabouts, leave the road open, and widen seventeen for long-term success, because Silicon Valley is here, the ocean is here, the cars are going to come there. So we, it's just a part of the nature, nature of the beast.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Holt, so you have a business both in Los Gatos and Campbell. How does your businesses compare in those two cities? And why would one, why is one better than the other?
Well, I will be able to answer that question a lot better in like a year, when they're both the same business, because now we have a new business that's, you know, hip and cool, and everyone's loving it, but we have like four to five hundred walk-ins Fridays and Saturdays. We have forty in Los Gatos. Of course, it's a little bit different business model, but the matter of the fact is that there is people everywhere on the streets. There are old, there are young, there are kids, dogs, it doesn't matter, it's just people everywhere. And I see the same thing as I'm researching to open more location in Burlingame and Mountain View. It's people everywhere. Silicon Valley is booming. There's people literally everywhere. That's why the traffic is so bad. But in Los Gatos, it's less. There's less people, half-full restaurants everywhere you go. I'm not going to like, you know, throw businesses under the bus, but there is a lot of restaurants, for example, a lot of retail that are hurting like tremendously, like really, really bad.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you. Vice Mayor Burton-Craig?
Hello, council and senator. Would like to just give you a couple of things that I've talked about with a number of our residents. I've been on the other side of some very angry phone calls on a Saturday afternoon during the summertime, so I want to thank you all very much for putting this workshop together. One of the things that I'd like to maybe present to Matt is, we've, I've been getting a lot of calls asking to see if we can't do something about the cut-through on Daves and Vineland Avenue. So if you could maybe work that into your equation, I'd sure like to be able to give some people some answers. For example, Cavan, Palos Verdes, people are coming down Highway nine, coming down Daves, coming down Palos Verdes, Vineland, and yeah, it does, it takes a significant amount of time off. The other thing I'd like to suggest is a little bit of PR. I've really tried to structure any of my driving or any of my chores that I do on a weekend now. I head north, I head north, do all my chores, and then work my way back as long as it's after three o'clock. And again, it's hurting the businesses inside of the Los Gatos community. I don't go to the Apple Store, for example, in Los Gatos. I go to Oak Ridge, I go to Valley Fair. But one of the things that strikes me, as I'm driving north and I'm looking at an absolute parking lot past Camden Avenue, I'm listening to the traffic report, listening to KCPS. Before that, it was KLIV. And it was traffic here, bad, traffic over there, accidents. Traffic on seventeen, no accidents to report. Nothing about a parking lot on seventeen. Nothing about taking alternate routes. Maybe take ninety-two, maybe take eighty-four, maybe take one fifty-two if you're coming up from the south. I don't know if, if we actually send any type of press releases to these radio stations, or maybe think about taking out some advertising that says, hey, here's the beach traffic report for the weekend. Don't come. It's packed. You're not going to get there anytime soon. Leave a little bit later, or as Matt has been in the Mr. Roadshow column, he encourages people, get on the road early, get down to Santa Cruz before ten o'clock. Don't, don't start your trip at nine o'clock and expect to have a nice, smooth trip down seventeen. And then the last thing, yes, time does fly. I didn't really get a sense of how we can move more people into the downtown area on the weekends. And that's something that I've heard, is that a lot of people are very sad that they can't go to downtown, and they end up going to Campbell, because it's a lot easier to go north on Winchester. One of the suggestions that people have come to me a lot of is, we need to get some more rapid transit down there. Our community bus is not very effective down here. It comes, the intervals are very long, and if you miss it, you almost have to wait an hour for the second one. One of the suggestions that I had was, you've got a lot of open space southbound on Winchester. You could create some parking spaces in there, and maybe implement a shuttle that is more frequently stopping by that area, and get people into the downtown area. Just a thought.
Vice Mayor, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. So on your messaging about, you were saying, get out the message that the highway's full, don't come to Los Gatos, but how do we, how is that going to affect our businesses in Los Gatos, if the messages don't come here?
Got to work on that message. That's just an off-the-top-of-the-head.
Okay.
But I mean, I'm sure Santa Cruz doesn't want to hear that message either. I don't know if they've already talked to the radio stations and said, hey, guys, don't tell people how bad it is to come down here, because the radio stations never mention that there is a very serious traffic problem, and that there's, that there's no passage going through Los Gatos, that that's not a viable alternative. And they don't give viable alternatives. All they, all they say is, no accidents. And people are like, oh, great, there's no accidents on seventeen. I think I'll get in the car and I'll do, and I'll go head down there. They get to Camden Avenue, and they're like, oh, my God, what's going on here? They get off on Winchester, they cut over and they get on the Bascom, then they come south, then they start going down all the other little arteries.
So we can just send the message, traffic's bad in Los Gatos, just stop and eat lunch for a couple hours and stop at Time Out Clothing and-
Holt would love that, I'm sure. But, you know, just a couple of thoughts, you know, these are what I'm hearing from our residents. But thanks a lot for, again, holding this workshop and letting me come up and spew ideas.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right.
Maria Aristo?
Hi, Maria Aristo, eighty-five Broadway. I sit on a commission, but I'm speaking as a resident. There's so many issues, but the one thing that sticks out is, we've already started some work on the roundabout, and I know that years ago, that was something that was discussed, and I think it would be a real asset to the town. At this point, it's been brought up that, you know, we don't really know if a closure makes sense or not at seventeen, but there are times, I mean, just two weeks ago when there was a fatality and the ramp had to be closed, instead of having flares all over and having to create this whole closure, it allows us to close off the freeway when we need to. There's already been work and energy put into it, and maybe in two years, we'll suddenly decide, oh, my gosh, we've made enough changes, we want to do a closure. The roundabout facilitates that. It would also be an upgrade to the southern entry of the town. We kind of like, just sort of look like the end of a ramp. It would increase safety. And as we're looking at even things like the post office, or that land down there where people are talking about developing it, this would allow crosswalks, it would allow more safety for any kind of development that happens there in front of the hotel, by rural supply, people crossing to the parking. And then separately, I was at The Meadows for an event, and the people at The Meadows were talking about the fact that when the roundabout was in place, the temporary roundabout that we had, it was much easier for them to turn out of Wood Road and make the left turn downtown, because right now, it's really harrowing for them to turn left across traffic coming up the freeway, they're right there. So I think to serve those residents and to enhance the downtown, this would be a good thing.
Thank you. Any questions? Ellen Manzo?
I came out of general interest tonight, Ellen Manzo, living in Los Gatos. I came out of general interest tonight, and I heard a couple of things. Obviously, the traffic issue. I live off of North Santa Cruz, and I can attest to the fact that it's gotten busier this past year, this past summer. But the other thing I heard is about the revitalization for downtown, and I had an idea that I've been thinking about for a while. Scottsdale, Arizona, is an area that has a lot of similarity, I think. It has an old town, very much like this area. It has a residential area surrounding a main little downtown. And they have golf carts that run around Scottsdale all the time, that serve as commuters, ways of commuting, and they bring the local residents into town and the local residents out of town. And it has several advantages. For one, it reduces the traffic in town. Second, it serves as a traffic deterrent, because if people know that they're going to get behind a golf cart, it's not the fastest way to get from point A to point B. Third, it serves as a way of offering charm factor. I think Scottsdale is viewed as a charming town. Fourth, it offers a way to raise funds for a nonprofit, for instance. They go on tips for trips. Now, this happens to be one of the nonprofits I have a personal, a personal affinity for. This is the Veterans Memorial, and while I'm at my three minutes of fame, I'll just make a point that tomorrow, on Thursday of this week, there's going to be an open house over at the Adult Recreation Center, where we'll talk about the Veterans Memorial design, as well as we're going to have General Hill House talk about his tour in Vietnam. We'll have one of our other Vietnam veterans talk about his tour as a medic, and we'll have a father of a Middle Eastern, of a special operations operative who had to work in the Middle East on five deployments. But, long story short, I think the notion of potentially considering or trialing the golf cart concept is a great little way to get people in, get people out, get people efficiently in and out, deters traffic, creates a revenue resource potentially for a nonprofit, and it might be something to consider trying in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manzo. Any questions? Okay. Thank you all very much for sharing your comments with us. I know the senator has been keen in listening on the experiences that many of you had. It's one thing when he hears it from council members, from both Los Gatos and Monteserino, as well as staff, but I appreciate all of you coming tonight so that he has that experience to hear from you directly. I do know that he does have to go, but Senator, do you have a couple comments you'd like to make, share, any advice on the state perspective, how that may be of assistance to us as we continue to pursue these strategies?
Well, I thank you for inviting me to come. I enjoyed listening to the comments that people had about the deficiencies of the state highway. I enjoyed that. I have a thing I wanted to put up on the, this is kind of, I brought it down for the council in the benefit of the public. It's, let me get that up there. This is a picture of two oh-four, Steve knows about this one, because I talked to Steve about it.
Los Gatos Boulevard.
Los Gatos Boulevard. In eighteen ninety, that house is there with two giant palm trees in front of it at Stacia and Los Gatos Boulevard. It's, happens to be where my grandparents lived for about forty years. I know some people that lived here for a long time. Well, my family came here in nineteen thirty, and my dad graduated from Los Gatos High in nineteen forty-one, and took off to Europe and so forth in the war, and came back and raised his ten children, my mother, and Cambridge area of San Jose, so. And I graduated from San Jose State also, and then I came, I guess people know this, I came here. My first job after graduating was working in the planning department over here in the planning department. And I enjoyed that, and then I, I stayed here and got on the San Jose Planning Commission and so forth, so. Now I'm a state senator, and now I'm chairman of the California State Senate Transportation Committee, and we're able this year to pass SB one, which is the biggest infrastructure finance bill in the history of the state of California. I'm the author of that bill. So we now have resources to do things, okay? The main emphasis of SB one is to put money into the road maintenance and what we call SHOP, the state operational improvement programs. And so what I'm going to do is talk about things you can do with Highway seventeen. I recommend, it's not, I think Steve was kind of implying this in his comments, it's not widening seventeen or not widening it seventeen. It's, let's, let's look at seventeen and see if we can do everything we can to make it the most efficient highway possible, that we can make it. There were several comments by people, I think, there was a comment about all these merges. I hate that too, because that's my, I put down on my list, do a Highway seventeen eighty-five cleanup on that, you know, there's a lot of the crazy things we can do to straighten that out. You want to get, a lot of people don't realize this, but people slow down when there's road maintenance problems. And you ever notice the condition of the roads when they get worse? People slow down. That's actually true. So if you drive up the mountain here, that's one of the problems. And I think in, you know, you kind of look at road maintenance, and then there's another thing I like to say is, not the number of lanes, but how wide the existing lanes are. People slow down when the lanes are too narrow, they don't have shoulders, and if you give people a little more- And if you give people a little more space, traffic can flow a little bit better. It creates a better flow of traffic. It's not necessarily, you know, some big massive project, is what I'm saying. But I think the big project I would, would point out, though, is the interchange at Highway nine. And I'm happy, that's going to take a little more work. You can do that project and implement, and implement in phases. You might think about the quick fix phases. Then look at the bigger ultimate phase. It's already on the list of projects. So unlike widening Highway seventeen, the interchange at Highway nine is already it's on the measure B and therefore eligible for state transportation improvement funds. Okay? You know, there's already a bus to go to Santa Cruz, okay? Except, you know where that bus goes? It goes to downtown Santa Cruz. So if you're on the weekends, you want to go to the beach, the bus is useless for you, right? So if they had a beach bus, maybe that bus can be converted from a downtown Santa Cruz to the, it goes from the the train station in San Jose to the downtown terminal in downtown Santa Cruz, right? So if they had a bus that maybe stopped a few places, picked up a lot more people, maybe had more frequency, but then did not go to downtown Santa Cruz, but went to the beach, you might get some people to take the bus, right? Because then they can just hop on the bus and go home. Wouldn't you rather go to Santa Cruz on the bus? They could even place something on the top where they can put surfboards or whatever else they want to put on top. And I think, I think there's things like that that would, it's not just one thing, it's several smaller little things. I, I think you, as the council, the town council, and I know you're a town, because I worked here for three years, you're a town, you can figure out and have the long, hard debates about what's best for your own local street patterns. But I'll point out that the Campbell way they did with Highway seventeen is they did a study of Highway seventeen and the Hamilton interchange, when they were looking at that, and Camden Avenue interchange, or the San Tomas interchange, they studied at the same time Winchester and Bascom. So they had like a synchronized traffic management system is now existing on Bascom Avenue and on Winchester Avenue, so the traffic flows better. And, and that's one of the, they looked at the highway, but then they looked at the parallel streets. So that might be something you should do down here in Los Gatos. That might be a good idea. These are, these are there's also one called it's kind of a gripe of mine, because we, we had a big hearing this year on this. And truck freight management causes slowdowns on Highway seventeen, right? Does everybody agree with that? I think that's, so I think a freight management kind of plan for Highway seventeen might be something to look at. You know, maybe they can go in the non-peak hours where it's not so crowded. You know, develop some kind of traffic management scheme cooperating with the Highway Patrol. You know what I'm saying? So I think that's, that's another, you know, all these little things add to cutting back the congestion. You're not going to eliminate, but I think you cut it back. More transit, I think, is a big picture answer. I'd also suggest, I just met with Saratoga and Cupertino council members, okay? And they're being very, very aggressive on their bicycle pedestrian plans that they want to have in their communities. Because like, for example, Cupertino's having a lot of congestion. They're worried about, you know, Apple, Valco, D'Anza Boulevard, they're kind of worried about the businesses, kind of the same kind of thing. So that they're, they're focusing on something I face is a grandfather getting up in the morning and my wife, either my wife or I, you know, they start these kids at school so early, so my, my grandson lives with us, so he's a ninth grader. And he has to be, he has to be, he has to be at school at like seven fifteen in the morning. So, so, so we looked at the bike lane that he was, you know, like we're, my, my wife's either here or I'm driving him to the school. We looked at the bike lanes, we don't think they're safe enough for the kids. So this whole, we have a program that we got, we doubled the money in SB one, safe routes to schools for kids, to make it safer for kids to either walk, ride their bikes. You know, you know, they have, they have like in Cupertino planned to have barricades between the, the car lane and the bike lane, so that people feel a little more safer. So anyway, I think, I think those are, you know, tra, traffic planning is a very important thing. My job would be to work on Highway seventeen, Highway nine as well, and then secure funding for the town. That is part of my life and my heritage, as you can see. That's eighteen ninety, I think it's one of the oldest pictures of that eighteen ninety. I know if your historical society people have a picture of that. Oh, you have some old pictures in town. But that house was built in eighteen seventy. I told Barbara this. And you can see in the back, there's a carriage house in the back with a carriage and a horse next to it. And the hills and all that area around there is now developed with homes. And I think the, the young lady standing in the front, his name, her name is Cohen. And I believe she was the founders of your Women's History Club that's across the street from the house. Okay, if you look at history of Los Gatos, she was one of the driving forces founding that women's organization in the town of Los Gatos. That's her, I think she's about ten years old right there in that picture. So thank you very much. I'll do the best I can for you. I'll continue to work with, you know, and you have, you know, let's, let's not sell Los Gatos short. The food's better here than in Santa Cruz. I mean, you know, I mean, let's face it, you know, you can get a lot better variety and, and the food's better here, and you have more variety. And people don't, you don't have to go over the hill to have a good dinner. You can stay right here on this side and have a good dinner. So let's all, let's all get on our bikes and go downtown, go to, go to dinner, okay? Thank you.
So we're going to take a quick break before we deliberate. Does council members have any questions specific for the Senator?
Yeah, sure.
Yes. Councilmember Johnson and then Leonardis.
Senator, thank you very much for being here and listening to all of us and being at our meeting. And thank you for saying that part of your job is to get funding for Los Gatos. So I'm curious, is one of my things, and we heard testimony tonight about smart signals, because it's, in looking at all these problems, it strikes me that if the traffic moves better on the freeway and it moves better on the arterials, the ways won't direct it to the residents. And if the traffic can move better and the signals understand how to move it, that would help. So how could you and SB one help us to get the grant funding or straight up money to put smart signals in Los Gatos and on Highway nine?
Is that right? Okay. What I, I'll give you some, you know, planning advice, and I'll be working with you, it'll take some work. But my opinion is that Highway nine could be part of the designing of the new, of the designing of the interchange. And you might look at the operational signal improvements as part of the first phase. You know, obviously, some of the problems with the interchange is it's just now short of tearing down the structure, which, you know, two or three years, okay? At least, and you have to do an EIR and so forth. But when you do operational type improvements, you can do those a lot faster. So I think that, look at widening your merge lanes and making them longer and doing some of those kinds of things on the both sides. Try to fix up the interchange a little more on the operational side. And then at the same time, Highway nine signal synchronization or timing or traffic, we call it traffic management planning on Highway nine could be done at the same time you do the project and presented as one package. You know, because if, if you do that way, it's already tied to a project that's already approved for funding, right? So I think that's the way I would do it. I'm just giving you advice on, on this. I think there could be some other benefits to the project. You might be able to have better pedestrian, when you finish the project, better pedestrian and bicycle access over the interchange. Just say that. Right now, it's impossible. Would you send your kid walking over there to the high school? No. And then the other thing is maybe protect the high school by including sound barriers, so we can have less air pollution and noise going to the high schools. Because that's a, that's a, I would say that's a preeminent issue. Also, when you build a new project, you should include the highest standards of landscaping and environmental protection as well as the project. So it should include like bicycles, pedestrian. If there was a good, think of it, if there was a good ax, if you can get your bike across that, that Highway nine, or you can walk from Los Gatos Boulevard down Highway nine, think of, think of it. There could be people that just get out of their house, take a walk, go down, have a nice dinner, go shopping, walk across the highway back. And, but they can't do it now. It's kind of a scary proposition for people. I don't know if you agree, but that's, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Sacks. Senator Bell?
I know the town well, as you can tell.
You mentioned the truck freight management program. How fast would our staff be able to work with the CHP to implement something like that?
Well, this is very, very well lavishly funded by the federal government and the state government. The federal government in their reauthorization of the Surface Transportation Act included lavish amount of funding. In fact, it was one of the few areas they included additional funds. So I think truck management, truck routes, truck management, traffic management for freight is funded, SB one had a quarter billion dollars, a quarter million dol, a quarter billion dollars a year for freight goods management. So SB one's a five point two billion dollar annual funded measure. Five point two, fifty-two billion dollars over ten years. So, you know.
Yes, just one more question about the Highway nine interchange.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to look at widening the part between Lark Avenue and Highway nine as part of that project? Perhaps adding a little bit pavement here, restriping here and making that merge lane on Lark Avenue disappear all the way up to the Highway nine interchange?
You have to balance a little bit between making the project bigger and maybe it takes longer versus getting what you can do now finished. So I would look at it more like a phasing. Phase one might include some of these operational traffic management projects that are less expensive, but, but have a good bang for your buck. You know, like all, we call them fast fix projects. Go in, you can, you don't have to do a lot of engineering design, EIR, CEQA. You can go in and do it quickly, you can get it done. She was right, there could be some things to clean, I call cleanup on Highway seventeen eighty-five. I kind of feel that if we cleaned up Highway eighty-seven, eighty-five and seventeen, that, that in itself might, if we can get the traffic flowing good, at least past Lark Avenue, it's a definite possibility, right? I think, I think a lot of people want to jump off Lark Avenue and go down Winchester through your downtown area. You know, it might help a little bit. All these little things are little things, they can't, they can't solve the problem by itself. You have to look at it like a little bit here, a little bit here, all these different things will, will help, you know? But it could be a phasing with including of, of, of a study, a traffic management planning study on Highway seventeen. Could include all these different options, including the one you had, the zipper, which is now looked at, they're looking at technology that somebody in an office in the Caltrans Traffic Management Office pushes a button and the computer zips to the traffic. But you don't have to have, you know, personnel do it. You can have it done by the computer management system. So there's, there's
Did you have a follow-up?
It's a new technology, is what I'm talking about.
So, yes, one more, Mayor. That was my last question, I was going to ask Senator Bell what the feasibility of the zipper was.
Yes, it's been talked about, and I, and I'm going to find out more when I, I'm going tomorrow more, tomorrow. The reason I'm leaving is I'm going to Denver, Colorado. And all the chairs of the transportation committees and state legislators throughout the United States are having a meeting. And we're actually talking about technology like that in terms of traffic management. And then getting, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to get, we have an existing system. And in most cases in urban areas, you can't really expand it too much. You have to look at what you got and make it utilized as most efficiently as you can within the right of way that you have. You can't like talk about knocking down homes on either side or throwing a freeway through the middle of a park or, you know, like we have a Sonoma Lake here, you know, we're not going to wipe out that or, you know, you know what I'm saying? So, so we have to look at what we have and make it utilized as most efficiently as possible. So that's kind of, and actually, it turns out that that's not as expensive as trying to engineer and build something. You know what I'm saying?
So based on the meeting that you attend in Denver, would, will your, I see one of your staffers over there.
We have Alphonse here.
Will you be able to connect with our own wonderful PPW department and file, so that we can know what we need to do to follow up on that?
Yes, and I think the West Valley Mayor should talk also, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
You know, have an MR integrated approach to the problem with Supervisor Wasserman, myself and others.
Okay.
You know, we'd be happy to, you know, you know, agree on something. And I, I hope that we can have Caltrans staff, is Caltrans staff here at all today? They will in the future be here at your meetings on these things, because I will tell them to show up for your meetings.
Thank you.
You know, so.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Senator.
You're welcome.
One of the, I mean, not one of the, the issue that instigated all of this and all of these meetings has been the, the traffic apps, the wayfinding apps. And the town has been in discussion with some of the corporations. And we have, you know, some, we're getting some input. But obviously, this issue affects cities throughout California. And obviously, the state of California has much more muscle when they're talking with Google or whomever. Is the state of California engaged in any discussion with any of these companies?
Well, actually, in Denver, they're going to be there. So there, there is, there is I'll tell you how they're, they're, I'll just give you kind of the future, okay? These kind, these same companies that do these apps are now getting cars that don't require drivers, right? So how do you think those cars are going to make decisions about which car, where to go? They're going to use these apps that these same companies make, like Google or whoever. And they're going to have these apps tell the car where to go. You just punch in your, your, your destination, you tell them, oh, I want to go here. And then I want to go to Flight's Restaurant by four thirty, how do I get there? You know? Then the car just drives through everybody's neighborhood to get to the restaurant, right? Well, I think what the city people are going to say is we would like you not to drive on streets that are impacted. And there is going to be some discussion about, because these apps do force the cars to go into, you know, like right by, would you want them to go by? to go into, you know, like right by, would you want them to go by a school where a bunch of kids are? And all of a sudden, the app tells the, these driverless cars to go by like a school where kids are trying to, you know, like I take my grandson to school, half those kids aren't awake, you know? You know, and the rest of them have things in their ears and they're not paying attention, right? And so like, it's kind of like, we want to protect them, right? Steve, you know this. You know, you, am I correct? They're not, they're not even aware of what's going on half the time they're walking.
They're distracted.
They're very distracted. And then, so you, so I think, I think, as a form of principle, yeah. So I think, I think, I think we have to, we have to, we have to understand that this is the technology that's coming, that's going to be upon us in the next four or five years. I mean, we're going to have this technology. And think of how it works. And we have to prepare ourselves to protect neighborhoods, communities. That's part of what our job is as good planners, you know? So we have to get ready for it, right? So I think there is a need to look at it from a statute standpoint. I'm just giving you the argument, they might save civil rights or whatever, and I always remind them, I say, you know, those roads, those roads are built by local government, state government, and the users of the roads through taxes, gasoline tax mainly, and they're built by the cities and counties. And then, and as far as I know, with the DMV, driving, and the officers know this, driving is a privilege. So how do you create a privilege for a driverless car, right? How do you define privilege? What a privilege to drive for a driverless car? You know, so that's a, that's a question. We have to answer, we have to confront those things.
And it might give you leverage. Thank you.
So, anyway.
Vice Mayor, and then I think Senator May want to go?
Yeah.
Thank you, Senator Bell.
Got work to do.
You've answered some of my question, but let me go a little bit further. So last time we talked about traffic, I had suggested a study for exactly what you're talking about, improving the efficiency of Seventeen, and I was thinking into the mountains also, look at certain corners, things like that. And staff's response was, well, we've missed Measure B, it's going to take us decades to find money to do these kinds of things. I had suggested a study, I think you're saying study is the place to start. You know, the real question is, how do we get, how do we make it less than decades to do something? You're telling us around the, you know, we already have a Measure B program around the Nine interchange, so we can do some things there. How do we get the rest of the efficiency? Where do we start? How do we get money? It doesn't look like we've got any in our county is, I mean, it's all Measure B is really spoken for in projects already. So where else can we go to accelerate this?
Well, you want to get it from the State Transportation Commission chaired by Monica Serino, resident Carl Gardino. He's the chairman of the State Transportation Commission. I'm an ex-official member. So what, the way it works is this, okay? Like, I'll give you an example of how we did a study, okay? I got, I got concerns from people on the Six Eighty. You know, if you drive Six Eighty from El Pitas into San Jose, going down McKee, Berriessa Road, and I don't know if anybody's ever done that in the evening, Almrock Avenue, it's a mess, it's all backed up. And it's backed up because everybody's backed up off the ramps into the freeway travel lane, okay? So there's like this backup. So what we did is we went to Caltrans and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and we got, you know, I think it was a half a million dollars, and they have the engineering company, hired the engineering company that works with Mel Pitas, City of San Jose, the county, Caltrans, the different agencies, and they did a study on Six Eighty. And what they came up with is sort of the same thing I'm talking about. Projects that can be done quickly without a lot of like, you know, expenditures, you know, like quick projects, and then other projects that might involve like more two, three-year, you got, look at short-term, medium-term, long-term projects, like which, and then try to, try to, you got to do them all, but you know, kind of look at it, how you have to, you can do things quickly to have a bigger impact. Traffic management is something that is all, you can always come up with some answers to make things more efficient in terms of the system of movement. You can't, you can't do it in a bigger way by, unless you build things, you know, like building more lanes or whatever, or a new interchange or something. So, so I think, I think on that Six Eighty study, from start to finish, I think it was eighteen months, and it was a half a million dollars, and it was like twelve miles. I mean, it, you know, I mean, that's, just giving an example. I think there's already been studies on Highway Seventeen, so it might be that there's already stuff that people already looked at from an engineering standpoint. So you, you might already have some engineering ideas that are already done.
Okay.
You know, I think on the interchange here, you probably do have some engineering that's already been finished on that. So it might not take long to kind of dust, dust it off and update it, and, you know, the structure, the engineering stuff that's already been done. So, anyway, that's my, that's, you know, eighteen months is the one, we did one, a big twelve-mile one for eighteen months, so. Half a million dollars, a billion, half a million dollars, I think is what it cost.
Thank you.
Good, well, thank you very much.
Again, thank you, Senator, for your attendance tonight. You've given us a lot to continue working on. We'll be in touch with you.
A lot of work, we got to do it.
And thank you all. We are going to take a quick break to allow people to rest.
No, I, I'm giving that, I'm giving that picture to the mayor and the council. I have an extra copy, but you can give it to your archivist, I guess, the historical. I don't know if you have a.
Okay, thank you everyone for that break. So council, we, any questions of staff? And eventually what I'd like to do is, I think staff would like some specific direction based on the various options in front of them. One thing I do want to make a comment to and let Director Morley know, I think Mayor Anstig, and Stan, okay, and Standing, am I saying that correctly? And Standing, has already reached out to Mr. Gardino. And when he returns, we invited him to this meeting. When he returns from a business trip, he has promised to reach out to us, the mayor of Monoserrito as well as Los Gatos. And it'd be great if you and the town manager could be present at that meeting to help assist with any specific requests we have.
Thank you, look forward to it.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you Mayor. So I want to bring up a subject and I'll ask it in the form of a question. So, one idea I've been thinking about, and the question is can we, can the school busing somehow, you know, what we learned from that be expanded into more of a, not just for school, but a shuttle around town? I've been thinking about, you know, we have several large projects coming our way. Let's take Alberta Way, for example, they even volunteered a shuttle. We just did another office building. And we know the MTC Reg 14 Rule 1 says over 50, they need to have a TDM plan. I'm feeling like, we haven't really thought out very much what we want for TDM plans in this town. And one idea I was thinking is, well, what if we were running a shuttle that was getting people, you know, let's say from the office buildings to lunch, so that there's, you know, helps parking in downtown, helps vitalize our downtown. Maybe you get, you know, as more, it doesn't have to just be office project, it's large project. Somebody brings a assisted living project on Blossom Hill or something. We may not be able to require, the town attorney would have to weigh in on that without a nexus, whether we could require them to pay into a shuttle program, but we could offer it strongly as a, one of their TDM required options, for example. So after all of this long introducing the idea, I'll put the question out as, so we're already studying school busing, which I assume we are going to operate or have somebody operate for us, how much harder is it to expand it to some other kind of program that we can offer as a TDM solution for these larger projects that are coming our way?
So, a lot to that. So, I'll start with a discussion, a quick discussion on the TDM plan. And it is something that we've discussed, I think as, as we move towards a vehicle miles traveled analysis versus a level of service analysis associated with our traffic studies, it may become a natural, a natural fit to have, have things like a shuttle program that fit into that. And that's certainly a discussion we'll need to have with the council, ultimately to identify what the, what that starts to look like. So, yes, that's something that ultimately I think is, is coming our way and will need definition around it. When that happens, I think is, is open for discussion and to the preference of council. Probably something that we can put on the, on the priority setting session discussion so that you can have, have a crack at it, we can have a little bit of background in terms of when our VMT discussion actually needs to, to move into something a little bit more firm, so we have some timelines with that, you can weigh it with other priorities. In terms of converting, or utilizing a school busing program with, with a local effort, our transportation mobility manager and I actually had this discussion this afternoon, as we were talking about what that, what the scope of the school busing program starts to look like. And Ying pushed, pushed hard for, you know, utilizing, or potentially utilizing, or being open to utilizing Caltrans capacity in their busing system to be able to meet some of the need. My pushback was, if you're, if you're putting your kindergartner on the bus, you're going to want to put that kindergartner on a, on a yellow school bus, and not on a transit bus, from a safety perspective and a confidence in the program. So it becomes a little bit of a trade-off. So that will be something I think that we start to, to look at in terms of feasibility, because it certainly factors in on the cost side of things. So as we're looking at costs, it may bring the cost down to actually do a combined effort. So that's sort of where we've left it, left it at this point, a lot to come out of the feasibility study as we do these evaluations and start to look at whether these things start to float or not.
Thank you, good answer.
Okay, so let me just, real quick on the feasibility study, you mentioned that that is, you're about to, that's almost underway, soon imminent. How, how is the rollout of that taking place and is there coordination with the school districts?
So that, that's our first step. So this week, we are meeting with the school districts to discuss the scope and the project with them, and to align and make sure that all the questions are answered and that we're all on the same page. I will say that with that, the vision for that program was that it was going to be a Measure B funded program. Measure B has been delayed somewhat, so we may miss where we were pushing hard on the schedule and using an aggressive schedule to hit the, the next school year, we may not be able to do that because of the funding challenges associated with it. So the, the study may actually, the pressure may be off on the study in terms of how quickly we finish it, which is bad in terms of implementation, but good in terms of allowing us the time to do a really good outreach and, and connecting with, with the appropriate parents and ridership.
Okay, and just one more question on the school busing. A lot of these, for example, the school busing, we've identified as a high priority already in our capital improvement as well strategic. We're not reaffirming them in this study if we are, just, you're giving us updates that requires no further action with the assumption that it remains a priority.
So we wanted you to see, first of all, to see and be able to take credit for all the, all the work that the town's already involved with. I think it's impressive, the amount of things that are going on and the, the projects that the council has, has moved forward. So, that was important. And it's also important to notice, note that there's a lot of transportation related efforts moving forward. And so we are, we are, as Senator Bell highlighted, we are incrementally addressing the issue. Maybe not all in one fell swoop, but there are little chunks that are being, being chipped away at, on the, on these projects. That said, if there's a project that you, you did not want us to move forward with, and I think the roundabout, the temporary roundabout on South Santa Cruz is probably a prime example of where we are currently, sort of moving in that direction. And if you wanted to change our direction, we'd be looking for input on that now and we would bring it, continue to bring it forward at council's direction at the appropriate time.
Okay, appreciate that clarification, thank you. Councilmember Specter and then Leonardis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The school bus program, what I used to call the Danville model, when, I understand that you may have some uncertainty, but when will the study be done? And after the study is done, how long before, assuming that it's positive, how long before the bus would be in, rolling down the street?
So from a process perspective, we need to complete the study and, and Ms. Smith is going to tell us now where, where that's at. And then beyond that, we'll, we'll need financing in, in order to make it happen. So we have to go through the VTA funding process to get in line at Measure B and make sure that we get awarded those dollars. So it'll be a little bit of work in terms of how we get funding. VTA knows we're coming, but we still have to get that, that Measure B, those Measure B dollars aligned. And Ying is a, Ms. Smith is a reminder, is our transportation and mobility manager.
Good evening, yes, the schedule is correct. We are looking at the implementation first. With the school service, we are really looking at the start of the school year, because we're limited when we can start. So like Director Morley mentioned, we're targeting the school year 2019. So, because the Measure B delay, 2018 is not feasible. That's pretty much the, the conclusion we got from VTA. So working backward, we're going to complete the feasibility, the first phase in the spring, and then go from there.
Leonardis?
Thank you, Mayor Seauk. If I have to summarize the evening, I'm going to go down the list of what I heard from the speakers and then what I heard from some of the other council members. Seems like the theme is to increase the utility with kind of the existing infrastructure that we have. And that includes Highway 17, it includes the downtown. It includes things like smart signal, signalization on Highway 9. It includes possibly a, kind of a master plan for our downtown, which may include having one-way streets or additional takeaway parking, turn parking into, what do we call that? Angled parking, diagonal parking, instead of the parallel parking. Adding more street sidewalks for outside dining. In an effort to be more competitive with other towns in the Bay Area that have done these types of things, such as Burlingame or Campbell or, or whatnot, to try to revitalize our downtown. And that's a whole separate theme than what we came to discuss this evening, but those points were brought up by speakers, so I wanted to emphasize maybe moving forward as part of our council's strategic goals, we consider something like a downtown streetscape makeover. And maybe we can issue certificates of participation bonds or something to fund it, come up with a master plan, and let's get moving on this. Twenty-eight years ago after the earthquake, we were the hottest downtown around, and now we are starting to fade a little bit, because other places have built a better mousetrap than us. With that said, moving back to the comments about Highway 17, again, this thing will forever plague us. We know that the traffic will never be less, especially on those hot days. And there will be only so much public transportation will relieve in that regard. But trying to get increased utility or increased functionality out of what is there, I mean, one could say, yes, you could put a double-decker on there and double the capacity, you can try to buy all the properties along the sides and blow up the mountain and make it wider. Those things will never happen, we're talking billions and billions of dollars. But if we take the existing width of the roadway and we try to re-stripe it, relocate medians to remove these choke points, these three lanes to two, to three, to two, which causes complete mayhem, and everybody to, try to cut everybody off to out-jockey them going up the hill. And then potentially getting that zipper movable barrier, if that's feasible in the long run, that would be something that we might be able to accomplish for a lot less money with the same road capacity, without, how can I say it? Any real further damage to the environment, or the environmental impact. That's what I would be looking for. I am also very interested in the truck freight management program, pursuing that, because Highway 85, I think, does not allow trucks. Highway 280, when we go up to San Francisco, you're never stuck behind a big semi truck or a fuel truck. But when you go up Highway 17, and it's a hundred degree day and you get stuck behind a fuel truck that's going 10 miles an hour, and everybody tries to merge around it, that just causes a complete train wreck up there. So trying to utilize the times when the trucks are not going over on weekends, holiday weekends, at nights preferably, not during commute hours, would be a wise thing if it's not already been implemented. When it comes to the downtown roundabout, I look at that from both schools of thought. I mean, obviously it can slow traffic coming off Highway 17, coming into town by the post office, which I think is a good thing, because there's something called highway hypnosis, and you're coming off the freeway like 80 miles an hour and you start to get to the post office and you're still going 80, and like, oh, hey, I'm in a town, it's, you know. So if we had a roundabout there, that would be nice, as well as a sign that said, welcome to historic Los Gatos, like Saratoga has, that would be nice too. I would not, at this time, support a permanent closure of that, that intersection, or a, I don't even like the idea of the temporary closures on the weekends. I think it is hurting our downtown businesses. I would like to go after the greater problem, which I think is the Highway 17 capacity. Really start pursuing, as Senator Bell said, those little things that all add up to big things. The Highway 9 interchange, which was brought up by Ms. Chen when she spoke, which I didn't even know was already slated, we already had funds, it was already a project that was being looked at. And go after the low-hanging fruit, the thing that are already in, in the works, and then try to expand on those to, to keep improving. So don't support the roundabout permanent closure, but I do support the roundabout itself. If there was a problem with the roundabout at that location, I would even support a roundabout at the corner of North Santa Cruz and Main. I know that's kind of a radical idea with that intersection, but that could work as Anything else in my notes? That's it for now.
So, thank you, Councilmember Leonardis. With each council member, understanding it's a study session, I'm going to just try and see if I can summarize, and then if I'm incorrect, please let me know. The thing that I want to make sure we, we capture is, of the things on attachment to that they've identified, that work is already underway, there is nothing that you are disagreeing with. The only one that sounds like you have a disagreement with, or has not made a decision on, is the actual closure. But all that, is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing up that point. So, I don't support the idea of metering lamps. I do support the idea of doing something-
Again, number, that's not work underway. So I, I want to make sure that we're not, of the projects that staff has already put effort in, that has been identified, actually if we can, in red, there's no directional change that you and/or council is asking of tonight.
Can we blow it up a little bit?
Ms. Lombardo, can you put the other, the Excel spreadsheet up? So if this helps us, allows us to gather input by council member across, across the line, it may be a little easier to see and we can make notes.
Everything there I agree with. In red.
Okay.
And some of the ones in black.
Okay. And those, if I heard you correctly, were the ones of efficiencies of 17 and 9 that Senator Bell talked about?
That is correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm not putting words in your mouth, that staff has the correct direction from you in terms of where you're at tonight.
Yes.
Okay. So who would like to, Councilmember Johnson?
Okay, I was not planning to work off the chart, but I'll try. I echo a lot that Mr. Leonardis just said. When I think about the traffic in town, I don't think of it as neighborhood A, neighborhood B, west side, north side, east side, south side. I think of it as, how can we make traffic flow through Los Gatos? And number one, how do we improve the efficiency on 17? If the cars are going to get off 17, how do we approve our arterials, Winchester, Los Gatos Boulevard, Highway 9? And to me, to get those to flow, so that Waze doesn't put people onto residential streets, is that that traffic moves. How do I move that traffic? Smart signals? So if I'm going to prioritize, that would be my priority. And not just on Highway 9, on arterials, Winchester, Los Gatos Boulevard, through North Santa Cruz, et cetera. So that would be my priority. With respect to the closure, I agree with Mr. Leonardis. I like the idea of a roundabout, as long as it is not connected with any kind of permanent closure of the freeway on-ramp. So if any of you have visited Park City, Utah, there is a roundabout just outside of the main street, where you could go up the mountain to the various places. Streets come in from three different ways, it works great, you get to downtown, it's very efficient, there's no signals, there's no stopping, you just do the roundabout. So if we could have something like that at Wood Road, or even at North Santa Cruz, probably wouldn't work with the plaza and everything else, but it's a really good way to really make a smart signal at Wood Road, so that traffic can move on to the freeway and off the freeway and through. So I am for the roundabout, but I'm not for the closure. I understand that some people like it, but the businesses are also a part of our community, and I think Mr. Holt made a good point about our sales tax. And if our sales tax is non-existent, none of these projects are going to happen. So I think we need to be supporting our business community, and the survey we got shows that all of the businesses are down, but their solutions to that problem are mixed. But it cannot help to, essentially what we're doing with the closure is we create a moat at Highway 9, because there is no reason to go beyond Highway 9 if you're going to the beach, and they don't come downtown, and it's too hard. And I don't think that that's kind of the burden that we should put on our businesses. And it doesn't help the town as a whole, because that input, the impact of that spreads throughout the town, not to one neighborhood or another, but throughout the town. And I see my job as doing the best thing for the entire town. So, with respect to those other ones, I would like to see a pilot, as I questioned, on a one-way on North Santa Cruz. I think it potentially kills two birds with one stone by allowing some relief for the businesses. And, give it a try. I mean, I understand the liability things, but we did close a freeway with a movable sign, so I, I think it's doable. So I'd like to see us give that a try. The other things, Senator Bell's idea about linking the smart signals to the Highway 9 ramps makes some sense to me. And it is in fact unsafe to cross over the Highway 9 freeway if you're walking, which I do actually more than I should. So I know that it's not safe. The freeway changeable messages, I like that, I think it's easy, the infrastructure's in place. And the fact is that Waze and whatever you get gives you data on your travel time and it directs you with a shorter travel time. You can get there two, one minute faster. And I know for a fact that my friends go like, oh, one minute faster, okay. But you have to, you have to provide information, because all that Waze is doing is giving information. So if I get information from Caltrans, I may do that, and to me, that seems like a really easy one to do. And I wouldn't worry about manipulating the facts, the facts of what they are. And you're going to get them on that message board, or you're going to get them on your app, so why not put it on the freeway for the one person who doesn't have an app? Or who's not looking at their phone while they're driving? So, the rest of that, the red things I am fine with, but again, roundabout but no closure, and I would end the closure for next year.
Would anyone, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So let me, let me start with supporting the downtown businesses, which I think is important. It's, so, I'm okay with the, the one-way street pilot, but I think it's far more than that. I agree with Mr. Leonardis, we need to look at a master plan for the downtown, and realize it's not exactly traffic, but I think it is related to traffic, because we're, we're looking at two reasons for solving traffic. It's residents trying to get home, residents trying to get out of their driveways, but it's also, we're worried about the vitality of our businesses in downtown. So, there is no magic bullet that we can do anytime soon to solve the, the traffic. So, I think we should look for other ways to support the businesses, to compensate for this. We can open up, or we can close, whatever, I don't, it's not going to completely solve the problem, their businesses are still going to be down from a few years ago. So I'd like us to, you know, maybe as another item, maybe in our priority session, look at master plan, look at, you know, widening sidewalks, look at a revitalization plan so that Los Gatos is, is more exciting to come to. You know, it's, it's really looking like, you know, we are in a competition with other downtowns. And we're, seem to be losing that because of traffic, I guess, you know, maybe because our downtown is not fresh anymore. So anyway, I, I consider it part of the same issue. So let me go to the roundabout next. I can't recall what we were going to spend on the roundabout. It's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'm, I'm wondering, you know, I'm unsure about a closure long-term, so one advantage to closing that is the freeway's going to flow better, because when the cars are merging there, that's, you know, as Ms. Dornar pointed out, I think correctly, that merges are where highways slow down, and that's the last merge. You can move the merge back further by having that closed. There is some advantage to it. It, it does say that people aren't going to drive through town and see the- It, it does say that people aren't going to drive through town and see the businesses, so theirs is definitely disadvantaged. I'm, this is a long answer, obviously, only on second item. And, and as far as next year goes, I'm, I'm in favor of us starting the summer off not closing it. But I would ask staff if we could be prepared to review somewhere maybe mid-July and decide whether we want to try closing for later in the summer. But I'm definitely, think it's a good idea to try it open again. I think we're going to get a different set of pitchforks when we do that. So, um, I, that's why I say I think we should review midsummer and decide whether we're going to continue with it open or do something different. What else is on the list? So, the Highway Nine corridor study, yes. So, Highway Ran- Nine ramps, I think that's all part of the, you know, related to this discussion. It's not up there, but how do we work on seventeen being more efficient? It starts with Highway Nine. The, the merge, merging is, is a big issue. I am for metering lights because I think those can help make the highway more efficient. That, I think Senator Bell mentioned that, and it's been mentioned other times. I like the idea of trying to find a way to, to a study to find out what are those smaller projects we can do soon, not in the next decades, um, to, to help the efficiency of, of Route Nine. You know, that's why I ask, I ask myself, well, should we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on the roundabout, or should we fund a study, part of a study? Should we fund the design or part of the design for the Route Nine interchange so that it gets bumped up in the, in the Measure B priority list, for example? Because we don't want to be year thirty, um, on, on the Measure B. Because remember, they can't do everything at once. So, you have to do things to get your project moved, moved up. So, again, I'm, I'm still trying to decide, you know, the roundabout is nice for safety, slowing people down. It's, it's a nice addition to town. Is it the right place to spend the money if we don't plan to do a lot of closures in the future? And I'm unsure whether we're going to do that or not. So, I guess I'm being unsure here, but that, you, you can see where I'm interested in more information to make a decision, though. So, the Highway Seventeen widening, you know, I would change that to efficiency improvement versus just saying widening. Um, because as you mentioned before, widening definitely goes against our general plan, which takes longer to get through, but I think looking for efficiency improvements does not. So, I would prefer if we changed, changed that category to something else. Changeable message sign, I unsure how well that's going to work. I'm not real high on that one. I'm not going to say, "Don't do it," because I don't think it's a high cost. Some of my favorites are, are, you know, I put a big star on my, in my iPad here is, is the last three, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are definitely ones that I think are high on the, on my priority list. And I definitely like weekend events, not so much to control the traffic, but to support the, the downtown businesses as this compensation. And maybe it's, maybe it's not even weekend events. Maybe we do an event Thursday night so that, you know, people can actually get to Los Gatos and businesses, you know, can get some, some help, um, other times. Maybe it's events that are in the shoulder season, so again, they can make more money in the, in the spring and the fall to compensate for the traffic that, you know, we're not going to make a huge dent in. We're going to continue to find ways to reduce, but I, I don't think we'll solve. Working with mapping companies, we already said that, you know, let's see what kind of progress we can do there. That could be part of some other solution, that, you know, the big part of the mapping is trying to keep them out of the neighborhoods. I don't think they're ever going to not be on, um, Los Gatos Boulevard or Winchester, which that keeps, takes people forty-five minutes to get home. The complaints about, um, I, you know, "I can't get home," I don't think we're going to solve that with mapping companies. But if we, you know, we, we could solve potentially the neighbors that can't back out of their driveways kinds of problems. At least, let's keep it on the, on the arteries or the bigger collectors. What haven't I covered here? The intersection marking, I'm, I'm, it's, again, it's probably not a lot of work, but I hesitate how much effect it's going to have, so it's not high on my priority list. And I said yes for reclassifying the town streets. I don't think we got that in there. And the Highway Seventeen, I'd like to call it something else. So, I'll, I think I've exhausted my thoughts.
Member Specter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right. And thank you, staff, for the list, so we can follow ourselves. Uh, roundabout at Wood Road, yes. Uh, and the yes is because it could serve a lot of objectives. One, it would be, uh, you know, an introduction to the town when you're coming off of seventeen. It could slow you down. Uh, it will slow you down when you're coming off of seventeen. That's good. It's an introduction. It slows you down. It could be a, uh, it could be a, a bar to people getting onto seventeen from, uh, Los Gatos if we need that for an emergency reason. So, I, and I know it costs money, but it doesn't cost so much money that I wouldn't do it. Uh, and as somebody pointed out, uh, it also makes the ingress and egress of Wood Road better. So, all those things are good. Uh, with regard to whether or not, um, we should use it as a, a way to stop, uh, traffic from going through the town and on to seventeen during the summer, um, do thoughts about it? One, to try it with it and without it, that seems okay. Uh, the issue with trying it and then coming back in the middle of July and seeing what's happening in town probably won't work because we don't meet. Uh, and if we have to wait until the end of June, until August, that would make me concerned. And the reason it would make me concerned is because when we first had this issue with seventeen and the wayfinding apps in, um, two thousand and fifteen, uh, I know what the traffic was like in downtown Los Gatos. The parking lots were empty, and the cars were going down, uh, Santa Cruz Avenue. They weren't stopping. The traffic coming the other way, coming north, there was hardly anything, if there was anything. So, we had the cars going, uh, south, heading for seventeen, and they were hardly moving, if they were moving at all. And then, so they filtered into, uh, the neighborhoods. So, I have real concerns. Because I'm such a reasonable person, if somebody said, "Well, let's just try it for a, a little bit," uh, I wouldn't object to that, but because I have real concerns that it would work to leave it open and that we wouldn't have a realistic way of addressing it after the, um, quickly, um, I, again, that really gives me concerns. The Highway Nine corridor study, yes. Downtown one-way streets, I would, I would, um, I would go along with that if we could turn that around quickly. Uh, and I'm not sure about that. So, that one, I'm going to go with unsure. Highway Nine ramps to seventeen, yes. Freeway charge, changeable sign, I'm good, I'm not going to go along with that one, only because, uh, I'm not sure that it would help us, and it might hurt us. Uh, because I could be driving down seventeen, going to Santa Cruz, and it would say, uh, ninety minutes to Santa Cruz, which would be realistic, but then I would get off, uh, in Los Gatos because it might be faster. Reclassifying the town streets, absolutely. Work with a mapping company, absolutely. Weekend events, absolutely, although I agree with the testimony that we had, or maybe it was a staff report. Uh, I'm not sure if that has any impact on traffic, uh, but it does bring people into town, so that's a good thing. Traffic signal update, yes. School busing, oh, I've been waiting for that for a long time, so that's a yes. And the auto trip reduction initiative, yes. So, let me look.
Can you capture line five?
That's because nobody else said anything. So, I just left it blank.
I think that was, um, what Vice Mayor was talking about, renaming more efficiency based on the conversations we were having with Senator Bell. But again, I don't want to make anyone feel like they have to comment, but I think there's variations now that we've discussed-
Shannon, can you put an efficiency line on the bottom? Just a new, a new number, like a number fifteen or whatever?
Because Highway Seventeen is so complex, uh, I am not going to say yes to Highway Seventeen efficiencies because I never say yes to something when I don't know what that, what it is, and I don't know what it is.
Okay. Okay.
And I think, uh, Councilmember Leonardis could say yes on that one as well. And then that helps. Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you, um, thank you, everyone, for weighing in. And thank you, Director Morley, as well as all of your staff, for putting this together. I agree with Director Morley in that a lot of this is repetitive, but oftentimes, we have people in the audience that are coming in, um, at various times and may not be aware of all the various efforts that are underway. And I think it's always helpful to the conversation to provide reminders that there are various projects that we are trying to attempt to alleviate traffic. With that being said, I would be supportive of almost all of them, but realistic that we need to prioritize. Um, and so you do have things that are underway. I want to just reemphasize how important I think the school busing is. As some of our councilmembers have said, we've been waiting for this for a while. Understanding that Measure B is in limbo because of the lawsuit, I just want to make sure we're, we don't lose our aggression in getting that up and ready when that Measure B funds is released. So, um, again, that's a high priority for me. You know, the conversations that we had today with Highway Seventeen and just the efficiencies, everything that has to do with safety, I think, has to be looked at and should be a high priority. And given all the accidents that have happened on seventeen, anything that could improve efficiency and safety improvements, I think are, are something that we should all be supportive of, and ultimately, that trickles down to, um, highway efficiency and getting cars flowing safely. I am intrigued by the various options that the Senator mentioned. Um, if there are some quick fixes that we can follow up with him on, I think that would be amazing, especially if he's willing to provide the funds for us. So, with that said, um, another thing I do want to, um, it sounds like we did get consensuses. In January, when we have our strategic priorities, economic vitality for downtown has been on there, and, um, that has taken on different definitions, but one of that is the capital improvement that has been suggested, the one-way streets, reduction of parking, a parking garage, widening of streets. And I think we need to have that discussion as part of the economic vitality in addition to the ordinances, and I would like that to be part of the discussion in January and have that weighed with others. Uh, I think there is some real opportunity to freshen our downtown, and if we can do it in partnership with our, with the Chamber and with the downtown merchants, I think there's an opportunity to create some synergy and bring some vitality that, that we all would like downtown. The Ru- uh, Wood Road closure, I'm supportive of. I think that should go on regardless of the decision on the closures. Uh, there, uh, the roundabout, I'm sorry. Um, and with, with regard to the closure, that's the hard one for me. I, I hear yes, I hear no, and maybe there's some happy in-between of one day it's open, one day it's closed. I was hoping to get, um, a larger margin from downtown merchants, um, that would help guide me. So, that one, I'll be in all, in all honesty, I, I do not know what the right answer is and would like, uh, to hear more. I don't know when you need the actual decision on that, um, if you need it today or if, or if that has, if that can be discussed at a later date.
We'll, we'll continue bringing the discussion back. We'll bring it through the priority setting session, and we'll bring it through the budget, budget process unless it's, unless we direct it otherwise.
Okay. Unless I see anyone that's against that, I think that's a, a decision that, um, at least we have a couple of insurers on, and that would be, including me. So, with regard to that, I, um, again, these are all issues where I know you and your staff are pursuing, and I hope that it has, gives you reaffirmant that these are areas that we'd like you to pursue. Um, and again, uh, I think we have some funding opportunities, a new support from our Senator as well as some of our partners. And if there's anything else that anyone in the audience feels that they would like to bring forward or help us with, um, I think that would be well appreciated. Councilmember Leonardis?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for staff. Um, I was under the impression that we had to continue to set up the temporary closure at Wood Road at a cost of two hundred and something thousand a year for several years to gather data to give to Caltrans so they would let us build this roundabout. So, what stage of the process are we in with that?
So, I, at this point, I think we, we have a significant amount of data, um, from our, from our, the collections that we've already done that can inform the project, so we're, we're good from that perspective. Um, the, a continued closure would simply provide additional experience in relation to the project for, for weighing throughout, uh, and it would be the council's discretion on whether that's something that we should, we should continue with or not. Uh, so, it, it's more linked to the other direction. Uh, if, if, um, if you want, did not want to move forward with the project, then doing an ongoing, um, summer closure would be, would be difficult to sell.
Yes. I mean, I, I, they don't go hand in hand, but I, I do, as I, I've said before, you can't continually do the temporary, um, closure without the end game being a permanent type of, um, roundabout there. Um, and it's not really dealing with the closure, you just can't really do that temporary roundabout without having a, a, um, permit process that you're trying to get to the end game. So, you don't have to do the, the temporary closure in order to pursue the permit, but you couldn't do the, the temporary roundabout without pursuing the permit.
So, if I understand the process correctly, we no longer have to spend two hundred and something thousand a year to do the temporary closure and gather any more data. At this point, we go to Caltrans with the data we have, and they're blessing, we hope, because it's their property. We need to get permission from them, and then we can issue, once we get permission, an RFP or something for the design and the build, and we figure out how much it costs.
That's essentially correct. So, we're working through the conceptual now that we'll, 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 uh, inform the permit process for Caltrans, so what type of permit we need from Caltrans and what that looks like. So, that'll be the next step as soon as we're done with this, with this initial conceptual design. Um, after, after we finish that, Caltrans will provide us feedback, sort of springtime, uh, on where we're at, and we'll be able to move forward in terms of a determination of next steps, including the permit process, the budget, and, and a little more firm timeline on construction, if that's the direction the council wants to go. So, right now, we're hearing, um, a, a bit of a mixed message on, on the summer, uh, the summer closure at the roundabout, so we'll, we'll continue to carry that forward. We'll bring forward the, the budget estimate and the costs associated with that, uh, until, until we get a, a firm, firm direction on that one way or the other.
Councilmember Leonardis?
Thank you, Mayor Seawak. In order to get clarity about the temporary closure, I don't know if we needed to add another line to our spreadsheet, but for me, that would be a no on the temporary closure. And we can probably get it all resolved this evening if we all voice our opinions and save some time.
Actually, we could, but if people have made their decision.
So-
Yes, um-
I, I certainly would think from a, and I might be shot for this, but, um, I, since this is just a study session that had many different items and was just as to cut through traffic, I think if, if you are not going to continue that program, I think it would be good to have that as an agenda item or as a, as a, a decision that's made to inform the public, um, on whether they want that to continue or not. But certainly, if you don't want that advice and want to make that decision tonight, then it just wouldn't come back by, by staff.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Johnson?
Um, two things. If, if we are going to have another meeting, I think it's through the chair, very important for everyone to say what their opinion is, because I imagine this being an exhibit at a future meeting. Um, and to the extent it is going to be a future exhibit, I was looking at my name with some of the stuff on there, and I don't know how it, the yeses got there. So, uh, I actually voted against the last meeting in September, the reclassification of the town streets, so that should be a no. Uh, I don't recall saying anything about mapping companies except for, uh, uneducated opinion about how they work, but I don't think we should be- about how they work, but I don't think we should be spending time with them. So those are the two corrections. And then my opinion on the closure is stated correctly. I think we should not go forward with it, so it's a no.
Okay. Are there any other corrections anyone would like to make? Yes, Councilmember Specter, and then Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I would need more clarification from staff. Are you looking for closure, yes, no? Because we have two nos and one unsure. Are you looking for a yes, no, staff?
Yes.
All right. Because if it's a yes, no, then for me, it's yes, based upon the experiences that I personally had and that I saw with the community when it was open.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So on that one, I really have to put the word "partial" there because I don't think we should be doing the one we did this summer. I've actually argued all along, we shouldn't do Sunday at all. And, you know, I've made the comment that maybe we should try it without, but be ready to add it back if we need to. So I want to put mine down as partial.
Okay, that's captured there. And since, I guess there was a request for more information on there for myself. Highway corridor study, yes. Downtown one-way streets, I mean, it's going to be long, but part of economic vitality plan. And so it's, I don't know how you want to capture that. The nine ramps to 17, yes. I would put skip widening, but freeway changeable message, I'm going to leave that blank. Reclassify streets, yes. And then go down to mapping company, yes. Weekend events, yes. Travel, yes. Yes. And then efficiency, yes. And then with the closure, again, that unsure could also be a partial. I think, I just don't, I don't believe I know what the right answer is. And so that's what's making this one a difficult one.
We can bring that back for an in-depth discussion with additional information. If it helps, we can cover it if there's time allowed at the priority setting session, depending on what else we want to talk about at that particular point. Let us maybe frame the conversation, but at some point, we will need some direction.
And I think what would be helpful is, what does partial mean? Are there options in between a yes and a no would be helpful?
We can frame some ideas around that, and maybe we can come to something else for you to consider.
One idea that I did want to pursue, I forgot to ask. There was a question about, are there things we can do downtown in the immediate before an overall change to one-way streets? And this afternoon, we met with the chamber about the holiday and what can we do to just make the first weekend of the holiday just so special? We have the holiday parade, we have the holiday stroll, we have the tree lighting. And it sounds like there were some initial discussions that were had with Director Morley on the street closures. What can we do, at least that weekend, to show through a pilot of some sort, that with these closures, there's a way to bring people downtown, enjoy the streets, and have that feed into the larger economic vitality plan that we're hoping to discuss in January?
So as with all of the items that are not in red, there's additional resource costs with anything that we pick up new. And I think that expanded or additional closures in the downtown, as we found out this summer, can be costly in terms of staff resources and dollars. So if there's some definition around particular limits of what you'd like to experience downtown, we can certainly price that out and bring it back for discussion and try and figure out where we're going to go with that, what the trade-offs might be.
What about just something simple as not pushing people out of the streets so quickly after a holiday party, after the holiday parade slash party?
So a good idea, again, there's costs associated with staffing, the closure throughout the whatever period of time and breaking it down. So the idea with breaking that down immediately is to reduce those costs as much as possible to the town, so it would be increased overtime costs. I haven't had a conversation on whether we have that capacity in-house for Parks and Public Works or the police department, so there's a little bit of work to be done on those.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Leonardis?
Thank you, Mayor. On bullet three for me, I want to make it say econ plan as well.
Me too.
That was from, okay, so you got that. Any other corrections? Yes, Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if it's a correction because of the limitations that staff has told me, but on the closure, I was under the impression that it was a yes or a no. And so between a yes or a no, it's a yes. The truth is, I want more information. That's my real answer.
Okay. So any last, yes, Councilmember Johnson, and then Leonardis?
Okay. Well, if we're going to fix it, I'd put a yes under my name for ramp metering. And I still believe that the one-way streets on North Santa Cruz is a traffic solution, but it's also a vitality solution. So if I can have a yes plus econ plan.
Okay. So Ms. Pravetti, as well as Director Morley, what are the next steps? I know this is an ongoing discussion, ongoing battle in many ways. What can the public anticipate next with regard to whether it's a next council discussion and/or action?
So thank you all very much for your deliberations and your comments tonight. It was very helpful, and thank you for using the matrix as a way of organizing all the ideas. Clearly, all the items in red are underway, so that is work that we will continue to do. We're very grateful to have our mobility manager now onboard to assist the team to get these things done. The next steps really are going to be preparing for our next strategic goals setting session. And I think, given the wide variety of ideas, I think the hard work ahead for us is to really understand what are some of these options, especially around the downtown streets and revitalization. Because quite frankly, the scope of a downtown revitalization, whether it's a modest streetscape or a whole redo, that has a lot of different variations. And to Councilmember Specter's point, that could also have a lot of impact in terms of timeline and community involvement, et cetera. So we want to bring back some options for you on the downtown revitalization. Bring back some options for you for the temporary closure. What does partial mean? Is that really viable? Is it going to have an impact, et cetera? So I think we've got some work ahead, and then we'll be working with our new mayor on getting that scheduled for your consideration. But I think our community should be assured that this is an issue that we are actively working on, as all the items in red identify.
Okay. Well, again, oh, yes, Councilmember Specter, and then Leonardis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question of staff, because I know the people in the room, I know the people in the community, one way or the other, have questions and concerns about the closure, whether they want it or they don't want it. When will the community have the opportunity to weigh in on this?
Well, we've been gathering public comment, well, ever since our last discussion in September. So the comments are still coming in, and we welcome them. We'll be updating our traffic website, where we've got all of this information, as well as a Q and A about the traffic situation. So we'll continue to gather that public input. Again, I need to work with the new mayor on scheduling for these items, so I can't, at this point, give you a timeline.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess my question is, will the community have the opportunity to weigh in on that issue in a more directed way, other than as a part of a overall traffic plan?
Yes. And I think, you know, one thing I'd like to discuss with my own team after the session is really what is useful in the priority setting session and what is really useful as a separate agenda item. So some of these items may take more than one council discussion, given the complexity, given the different options, et cetera. So we may have to think of a couple of different ways to allow for the community to have a voice, but also allow you to come to a decision so we know what we should actually be putting into our budget for the coming year.
Thank you, Mayor Seahock. There was comments from the speakers about the holiday parade, dare I say, the Christmas parade, being on the Saturday morning, and how that impacts the businesses for the full day on one of the best shopping days of the year. And when I was a kid, we had our Christmas parade in Cocoa Beach, Florida at nighttime. And I thought that was really cool, because you could do a lot with the lights. So I don't know if there would be input from the community that should be heard about possibly relocating the parade to a different time, an evening parade, or a different day, which was brought up by the businesses. And I don't want the people from the Lions Club to get mad at me, or the police department. I just thought I would throw that out there because it was brought forth by the business community here this evening.
Okay. Any last comments? Okay. So again, staff, thank you very much. This was a very thorough document, and we appreciate all the work that all of you have put into it. Thank you, audience members, for staying with us tonight. Meeting adjourned.